Area or doing something anyway, try to be, you know, get this, we have to, Terry and I have that Dollar Bill stretcher downstairs. We try to use that as much as we can. I don't know if I have another slide or not, I can't remember.
The south block of that, when the next one, back of the, the south, the next south block will be West High, that's pretty bad down there.
Yeah, so we're, we, we are kind of waiting to, south of Mechanic Street, that's going to be one of our worst brick streets.
That's really hard.
The health department were kind of, they are reimagining all that area they bought from strained glass. And they're going to be doing major construction. They don't know where they're going to want their sewer line. They don't know what size water line they're going to put together. So hopefully we'll hear from them and ideally if there's infrastructure, underground infrastructure improvements that we need to do to help with their new facility, we could tie that into a brick project, hopefully in 24 or 25. So we've gotten a lot of complaints about that section. It's very bad. So that's one that we have that we've, we've taken a look at. But we don't want to go put something brand new in and then realize they need a one size bigger water line for their sprinklers. And so we're hoping that they're moving along. We haven't heard from the health department for several months. But that's something that we, we want to fix it. Really, the solution there is a complete tear out. That's not a, that blocks doesn't really qualify for preservation. The soil conditions are under the road are really poor and utilities are also poor in that section, so. Part of this is completed. Last year, we were able to do some work on the north side of Vine Street. So we started at Center Street. We were seeing the stormwater carrying the bricks down to the stream. So we prioritized that work, a little, a small project at the end of the year. Part of actually what came out of some of our, our meetings about Edgewood Road was the cut through traffic. So Center Street is the dedicated route to the hospital. All the H signs from that side of town tell you to drive on Center Street. It is a major thoroughfare. But as you interact from the paved roads to the concrete roads, to the brick roads, there's a lot of grade change. There's a lot of places where people's cars drag. So what I'm presenting here is just, this part has gone out to bid. The south side of Vine Street is part of a bigger project where we will replace the curb and gutter, restack the bricks. But we're also working on, we'll be working on Center Street to flatten those transitions so that it's easier to navigate. A certain sized car, you really can't drive on that street. So it's a little bit unfair to tell people, hey, this is how you get to the hospital. But then if your car doesn't have enough ground clearance, maybe you get stuck in the, in the transition. So that project is, has been awarded to Smith Paving by competitive bids. Again, kind of a combination, so. I think that's all the slides.
That's it.
The other thing, last meeting, you did request a paving update. So just got an email from Smalls at 341 today. I forwarded that to, to everyone. I guess I didn't send it to Todd, but I'll get it to him. So talking about our main focus right now is going to be, the next push is going to be in the industrial park. So on or about the 19th of this month, we will be working through the industrial park. There's a diagram. We're going to make the industrial park kind of one way temporarily. We're going to set up some temporary traffic signals to make sure that everybody has access. There's a lot of truck deliveries, but we want to get this paved and get it up to date for the long haul. So you have that by email. If you have questions or any of your constituents have questions, just let us know. And then as we, we'll get a, this was sent to the, to everyone who signed up in the industrial park. This went out to them today. Get with Todd tomorrow to send all those, make sure that's out to the world for the employees. So questions, bricks and otherwise?
Go ahead, Mike.
Couple, three.
Yeah.
Hamtramck Street, concrete patch, McKenzie at, at Hamtramck for about half a block.
Yeah.
Where's that in the future?
Well, so with this, with this program, we are about, expended about half of the, the 200. And was it 206,000 there? I think we're about half through the expenses. So if you want me to prioritize that, we can change that back to brick or we can keep working on potholes and.
Well, by rule, it has to go back to brick. It depends on when you prioritize.
The question is, do you want to spend this year's money on it or budget it for next year? Doesn't matter to me.
I don't care when you do it, as long as it's in the, one of the budgets to get done.
Yeah, we'll do it.
That's why I asked the question. Two, might as well answer before we get a call. Catherine Street, the bricks and all that, isn't that project? It's still, nothing's changed, right?
Yeah, we, we are working through getting the process to get the manholes ordered and everything. So yeah, the project is awarded. Also, Smith Paving, separate project, low bid, that's awarded. All the finances are locked in and they'll have probably, we'll set a shotgun.
Since you didn't mention it, I thought I'd put it out there. So it's still on the list.
It's, it's, that contract is awarded and they have to be finished by August 1st, 2024.
And third, real quick, Sugar Street, the gentleman that used to work here lives on Sugar, used to work in your office.
Sean Boyler, yes.
Right in front of his house, there's a water spot that's been there for two years. Dry as the dry weather, we still had a water spot. Is anybody ever, is it a leak? Is it a spring? Cause you, it's sinking, it's going down.
Yeah, we can check it out.
It's been checked several times. But it's right, if you drive down the street right in front of his house, there's a spot right in the middle of the street that's a nice little birdbath.
Okay.
And it's been there, Brian, and I know you guys have been out, but I'd like to know what they find when they do it this time. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Other questions?
I have a question.
I don't know where we are in time, but I think probably ahead, probably going to need the time for other stuff.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned the Streets and Public Buildings Committee, going to move now to Planning and Zoning, Mr. Finier, to discuss food truck vendor regulations.
Thanks, Mr. President. Counsel, this is just for discussion. I would like a 15 minute meeting, next meeting as well. I sent, basically, we'll start at the beginning. What this, reason it's come up is I've heard a couple complaints from a couple local restaurant owners about food trucks. Mr. Hawkins even spoke to one of them about the very same thing. Why aren't food trucks paying income tax? Are they licensed? Are they allowed to be wherever they want to be? I know they're not paying income tax, where are they, Terry? Like nacho taco, do you ever get any income tax from them?
I don't collect the tax.
Tax office actually cannot divulge individual payers.
Well, let's just put it this way, I doubt they are. Cause they just appear and they, and one of the problems we're having is that particular truck, because I can see it every day when they're there, they used to be 50 feet from Tripolte's door. And now they're a little further away. And so I, I looked into it and I pulled up, I sent, I think I sent everybody what Granville does. Did everybody get that? I had what Bellville did, and I think Bellville was a little more strict than I'd like to see. This was a little more something we could work with if we decide to do it. I'm not saying this is what we have to do. But it's, it appears to me, and it, and I know we have local businesses that have food trucks as well. Honey Buckets. So he has a food truck. A lot of times it's on his site. Sometimes he takes it somewhere else. You know, how do we want to control it? Do we want to control it? And that's just one, for instance, of a local vendor. There's others, I'm sure, that has actual, a brick and mortar and a food truck. So I put it out here for comments. There's, like I said, there's a lot of towns that actually control food trucks. To me personally, we had a food truck this summer that sat right in front of the county commissioner's office on High Street. That didn't look, I didn't think it looked real pretty. I didn't think it was something we wanted to do in City Mount Vernon on one of our main streets. But I put it out here for comments and we've got 10 minutes to do so.
So a couple of questions. One, we don't really have anything on the books right now to monitor or control food trucks.
Actually, they should be required to have a peddler's license. Beyond that, they are inspected by either our health department or another county health department, and they have to have that.
And I think the fire department also does another check on them, from what I've talked to them about.
I believe that's what they said.
So who follows up to make sure those things are done? Like.
Well, we don't have any sort of professional license bureau. It has, once again, it's one of those things that have been delegated to the Safety Service Director. And I don't believe it gets, I believe it's something that we catch as catch can.
So that's how Granville does theirs through their, actually through, there's only, it'd be like through Greg B. Miller. That's who does theirs. Peddler's license, basically, is that something that's got, where do they get that?
Safety Service Director's office.
So have we, does anybody know if anybody's ever applied for one?
Yes, a couple of years ago, I know that we, we got a lot during COVID.
That's kind of when this whole thing blew up.
Yeah, it really did, because they lost their, they lost their revenue stream when, from all the festivals and so forth. And so I know we did see some at that point in time. Again, it's, I just don't go out and check those things. It's, we're, we're working on other things.
Um, and this is not something that I think we need to handle immediately. That's why I asked for another, one reason I put it out there is for public input. You know, we have, they just had a food truck fair on the square a week ago. And from what I read, it went off well. I'm not, but that is something, if I'm not mistaken, they go to the city, they get a permit to do all that. So that's not really what I think they're complaining about, although I think if they're doing that, if, let's say, I think there should still be some way to follow whether or not they're paying income tax on these people. The same as if, if Tripolte, who, who she told me takes eight people to start that business every morning. They're paying income tax on their people who work there, yet we have a food truck that most likely is not 50 feet from their door. I think it's something we need to talk more about and maybe do something about.
So when there are events around town and I see multiple food trucks together, does that mean they've all done all the paperwork? Or they've just arranged that themselves?
I can tell you generally, when my wife worked for the health department, we had a first, I can tell you, when we had a first Friday event, the health department would come down and make sure they were licensed, they do a spot check. And made sure that they had their hot water, they had their gray tank, they had three compartment sinks and all so on and so forth. So an event like that, and I don't know what's happening now, because my wife's been retired for a year and a half, reminds me daily. So that's what happens with those, with the health department. And that's basically either a new license or make sure they had a correct license and they were doing what they're supposed to do.
But it sounds like they've done something that clued the health department in on the fact they were doing this. But if someone just drives a truck in from out of town and sets up.
I'm not sure much is being done.
Even when Terry first went to the health department.
Like, I can tell you, we're not going out to food truck after food truck, asking them what, you know, what's going on. We're, that's just not been one of those priority things that we've, we've had to.
But if we did like, they're doing in their ordinance, they charge $200 a year. They go through the engineer's office to apply for it. Therefore, that would be help pay for what the city would do, even if we'd have to subcontract to somebody else.
Cause we currently don't have anything that says that they can't just drive into town and set up.
Well, is that there are zoning rules, we've talked this over with Ms. Blankenhorn, that there's, they cannot set up in residential zones. They cannot, you know, is that zoning controls over where they can set up. And we have in fact moved several of the food trucks because of the zoning rules over the last 18 months, I think.
Okay.
So we had food trucks in residential areas?
I believe that there were complaints made to engineering and that Ms. Blankenhorn and I discussed that food trucks could not set up in residential areas. And I believe that they were moved.
And I'm assuming that was prompted by like a resident calling.
I would assume it's very often, these are complaint based enforcement actions.
When Terry first went to the health department, I remember she came out and inspected Kiwanis Chicken Barbecue. You know, we had to have a certain meat temperature, we had, had to do all the wash things. So, so how's that different than all these other?
And you were using a yardstick to stir the sauce. First year, they changed that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's good. You know, they change things, but why them and why not other people?
Because Kiwanis applied for an, a, the food permit annually. Thus, we told them we were going to be there and they knew to come and do that. Because when I was in Kiwanis, that's one of the things I helped with.
But that's just the food license through the health department. You know, they're busy too. I don't know how much, for one thing, I doubt very, I, and I'll follow up for the health department. But I doubt very much they know when these trucks, some of these trucks are even coming to town. I mean, they come in, they pull into Kroger's parking lot.
I also believe that the state changed the law several years ago that allows you to get an inspection from any county health department and operate anywhere in the state, if I, I believe that's correct.
I don't know, you have to ask them. I sent you a copy, did you get it?
So, question. Do they have to have this license posted within the, inside the truck or whatever?
From all the years I had it hammered to me, it's supposed to be where, if you walk up to the window, you can see it.
Yes.
But that, again, that's just the food license. Are they paying income tax?
He just wants to be fair.
Are they insured?
To the brick and mortar, the brick and mortar restaurants in town. So we're playing on an even playing field, so we're fair to them. And I don't think we can stop them if they meet all the requirements. But we ought to be fair to the people who are abiding by the rules.
One of the, one of the pieces in here with the application you do, it mentions that the property owner has to be part of the application. So you take Kroger's. I doubt that that owner, that Kroger Plaza knows it, even though they're pulling over. So that would be part of it as well, and that may help control this. I'm not saying we got any other food trucks, but I think there's, everybody's got rules to follow and that should be one of them.
I think it would be wise to read through the two examples. If we can get any other examples from other communities, that might be valuable. And then we, we might want to draft something here for.
One thing Bellville did was very strict. Bellville, you paid a license fee upfront. It was good, you could only be someplace for three days. And then you could only do it, I want to say, three times a year. And that was it. With Granville, there's not a limit on how many times a year, although the health department does limit how long. It's funny, because my wife and I were just talking about tonight, the health department limits how long you can stay in one spot, but you only have to move a foot.
So quite, one other question. There are some food trucks or something in there right behind COTC off of Gay there. Are those food trucks? Are those there year round?
There's one sitting there, there's one sitting there parked that's been there.
For a long time.
That's owned by the people that own that parking lot. Sit across the street. There again, you take, go ahead.
I just, a lot of things to think about. And I certainly don't want to make a, you know, we don't want an unfair competitive advantage against people who put up brick and mortar. But on the other hand, food trucks have been, in some ways, an answer to some of our, our problems. You know, during COVID, people invited food trucks in because that, that was a good solution to a problem. I believe, thought Brian told me, that someone told me that brought food trucks into the industrial park to kind of, you know, help relieve some of the traffic. And MVNU has brought food trucks in. So I really want to be careful that we don't put extra license fees or, or onerous fees on businesses who are really serving our public and, and helping us solve some problems. So I just want to make sure we, we walk up, make sure, you know, that we're being fair to our brick and mortar. But we're also being welcoming to businesses who are, who are frankly helping us and serving our citizens, so.
And I want to make sure, as you look at legislation, I don't like to pass any legislation we can't enforce. And so who's going to enforce it?
Absolutely, second that.
Is it going to be the engineering? Is it going to be, is it going to be Greg B. Miller? Who else is it going to be and how are we going to enforce it? Cause there's no sense in having legislation we can't do anything about.
So here's what I'd like to do. You've all have this, I'd like you to look through it. Make that a 10 minute meeting, I don't think you need 15. Thank you. We're going to talk about this again in the next meeting and try to make a determination whether I spend the next two and a half months working on this or whether I don't have the support of council, because I'm not going to work on it, but I'll have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. During that committee meeting, we now move on to Mrs. Woods with the Safety Service Director vacancy compensation.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, did you want to take this?
Well, I guess I can, in a nutshell, I guess, sort of summarize what I sent an email to you, Mrs. Woods. The, the four non-elected officials who are helping with the Safety Service Director duties are Mr. Ball, Mrs. Blankenhorn, Mrs. Neff, and Mr. Hinkle. Talking with them, they, when, we originally had this vacancy and they graciously to, agreed to accept that. They said they would, they would work for, it was a $500 rate, and I can't remember off the top of my head now, was that, Mr. Braun, that was, was that the pay or?
Per pay.
Per pay. For every two weeks.
Or, what's that?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks. And so that was agreeable to them and we looked at, we, we looked at the math and that, that seemed to be a fair amount. So Mr. Braun and Mr. Scott and I are not taking any additional compensation for that. And so we, it would just, we'd like to be able to pass that this evening so we can, and have that retroactive to the official, the start date of when Mr. Zick was officially gone.
And I've had a chance to talk to everybody. Does anybody have any concerns, questions? Mike?
I do, and we had talked. I just, I want to throw this out and making sure I'm clear on this. I don't have a problem with getting compensation if they're doing extra work. And you set a date to it and that's fine. You also announced you hired your new Safety Service Director, so we know what it is. My question is, in reading your email and prior meetings, you've mentioned that there's things on the Safety Service Director's list that he or she shouldn't be doing.
Right.
And that you want to get those things off that list. I assume some of those may be things that, I assume that we don't need to do anymore. There might be a few of those. But then there's those things that still need done, that you're going to have to give to somebody else or, I hate to say it, hire another person.
Well, that's what's, I'm, I'm not going to candy coat it, it's what it's looking like, yeah.
So let's just say we got this list of 25 things that we're going to not have our safety, new Safety Service Director do. And now we got to put them off on somebody else. Are we setting a precedence, precedence?
Precedence.
By now saying we, we're going to pay you extra for doing that job and then maybe make it permanent. Are we going to pay these people more money down the road?
I'll defer to my lawyer colleague over here on setting precedent.
I don't think that we're setting a precedent because I don't see us devolving any of these specific duties on all these people who are already full-time employed. You know, is that during this time without a Safety Service Director, we had to all pitch in and work here extra time. And I don't suspect that we're going to be looking to overload these people with other duties. Some of the duties listed for the Safety Service Director are just not done. Others of them should never have been done. You know, the Safety Service Director is the zoning enforcement officer. And it's just something that doesn't really get done. So we need to do something about that.
Sure. There is, Councilman and the rest of council, the, the ad that went out that, that Ms. Neff and Mr. Braun and I put together was a two-page position description for the Safety Service Director. There are 53 pages of code in the Mount Vernon code, all related to the Safety Service Director. That we're looking at different department heads and certainly I know engineering has been, I've asked engineering to start taking a lead role because there are, there are many zoning issues related to that. And so it's just, it's not realistic. It is not realistic. And so we've got to look at what are these services, what are these tasks that we're asking of this person? And does it make sense to have it right there? And I don't know the answer to that yet because we have, we're not through it yet. So we're like on page 10 of 53 or 58 right now. And so we'll keep hacking away at it, but it's, we're going to look at restructuring, we're just going to have to.
And, and everybody likes to get paid more money. And like I said, we kind of threw this on them at the last minute because of the, how fast Mr. Zick left. So the job still had to be done, we had no time to prepare. I understand that. I just, I think we need to be careful. Let's take engineering and Lacy's job. Let's take engineering and Lacy's job. She does a very good job. But if we're giving her $500 of pay extra now, and we don't change what she's doing because we're now saying the Safety Service Director is not his job, she's going to grow well if she's expected more money. Now, how do we do that in the budget going forward?
Well, I would say, I don't know that she's, I don't know. She needs help. It's not so much money, she needs help. And so, I'm more worried about getting, I'm not, I'm not, I understand what your question is, and I don't know if, if that is a precedent or whatever. There is some compensation, I think, that we do. It is good form to pay somebody for the extra headaches in a short, in this short time period. And what does the structure look like? We're really looking at restructuring, because we're growing, we're going to have a lot more growth, and we're going to have, which means we're going to have a lot more development services coming through that office, and we're going to need to monitor, and we're going to need to, we're going to be issuing a lot more permits. We started, we increased our permit fees, which is, which is another thing that's helping to generate revenue, that could pay for another position. So, not just looking at trying to just spend money needlessly, we're trying to raise the revenue to be able to pay for the services that are going to be necessary for us to deliver.
Can I interrupt for a second? I have a person texting me that wants to see what we're doing live-streamed. Are we live-streamed right now?
On air.
Okay. I can, I can let the person know that, it's just-
Bruce, I can tell you the PA system in the room's not on.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're not.
One, two, check, check.
It's definitely, it's on.
You should be able to pick it up in my, my high-doubt orders.
Are you getting any readout on the audio?
I hear that now. I just now hear it.
The PA system is not coming through, but it's going, it's on, it's going down the line, so. Anyway, I don't know if it, I, I understand what you're saying, but we got a lot, we got a lot to figure out yet.
Thank you for saying you're going to have that upfront while you're figuring.
Okay, so, my recommendation tonight, we'll get this passed tonight to get these people paid for the work that we've been doing, so.
I agree, concur. Thank you.
Okay. We'll adjourn that committee meeting, we'll turn it back over to Mrs. Woods on elected official compensation.
Okay. So, we'll start more pay conversation. So, again, I've spoken with each of you, and I, I think the consensus is, you know, we gave everybody else in the city 3% to do 3% on everybody else, with the exception of the mayor, whose salary was reduced at some point before he took office. I've taken that amount and added where the prior mayor's salary would have been today, it's about $1,500 difference, and then put 3% on it. I'll give you these, so you can look at them. Ignore council, because I'm really confused about what we currently make. Terry, you're going to tell me with that. I've got different salaries on four different pieces of paper. But to do that, the, the column on the left is their current salary and adds 3% each year. Do we have enough to go down? Okay. And again, I've talked with each of you. If you have comments, now's the time to make it. It's the third reading tonight.
I'll start. I actually really love Mr. Morrison's suggestion to have a committee look at the salaries of elected officials. I think it's, does not give clear transparency for elected officials to determine elected officials' salaries. We have boards and commissions for lots of different things in this town. I don't see why this wouldn't be something that in the future we consider.
Saying in the future, this has to be done before the election, you're saying not this year, but in the future, or you're saying this year? I'm not sure.
I don't know if timeline-wise, it could get done in the future.
I don't, I don't think so. Yeah.
I just want to be clear.
Terry, what is council's current salary?
Calendar year of 2023 for council president and council members is $9,218.
Thank you. I'm going to do some really quick math here while you guys-
And you were thinking that would be just one and three-quarter increase, correct?
Yes.
We have been talking 3% for everybody. One and three-quarter keeps us up with OPRs, so it qualifies as a year. So, that's the point of this discussion tonight. I've had varying conversations on us.
I support just the one and three-quarters, just enough to keep us, excuse me, keep the new people in PRS. Like Janice previously said, there was a long time we didn't, council didn't take our rates, and felt good about that until it came along with PRS kept increasing. And like Terry said, we lost the money that we paid into PRS, we didn't increase our wage. So, 1 and 3/4% does that, I don't think we need the 3.
Other, other opinions, it's Mike's, other ideas.
So, I agree. I, I think the 1.75%, by the way, it sounds like I can hear myself now. I think the 1.75% to keep us in OPRs is good and fair. I like the 3% for the others. And then Tammy, what, what is this to get the mayor's position? What, what is that additional?
So-
And then how does that figure going forward? So, we add it on to 2024?
Right. So, then I, then it's just 3%?
After that.
After that.
Okay.
So, if you had taken Mayor Mavis's salary un-reduced to 23, add 3% to it, is that figure you see under 24?
Okay.
So, again, the 1 and 3/4% council conversation versus 3%. I've heard multiple sides of this. So, where, is everybody settling in on 1 and 3/4s?
With me.
Okay.
The new good, the new people, how do they feel?
Sounds commendable.
Yes.
So, if you're going to amend this in tonight's legislation, are we going to have language to vote on tonight?
That is my intent.
Do you have copies?
Thank you.
You have fresh copies for us, Terry? Okay.
Terry, just for my peace of mind, does that take 24 to 9380? Is that what you had? Or do you not have that?
9379, miss.
Okay.
And then 9543, I think was the paper.
That's right.
9543 is the second?
Yeah.
That's what it currently says.
I know the, the first language had us taking a pay cut, and I got something different, so I just want to confirm that.
So, what was 24 again?
24 for council will be 9379. We're currently at 9218. The 1 and 3, 1 and 3/4% raise takes us to 9379 and 24, and 9543 and 25.
Right.
Ma'am, forgive me if I misunderstood. If I'm doing my math correctly, the mayor's salary moving from 76373 to 786064, that is the 3% increase.
Correct.
Where is the?
So, the mayor is currently making 74875.
So, that includes?
That includes, that is taking the prior mayor's salary, what it would have been with the increases that have been there over the years.
Okay.
And then adding 3%.
Thank you, I misunderstood that.
Yeah.
And I'm in favor of that.
Well, this might be a much shorter meeting than I had intended.
So, I'm the slow learner here.
Okay.
So, the mayor would, would be an increase of 1,500 plus 3% on that, right?
Correct.
And then the auditor's at 3%, law director's at 3%, council's at 1 and 3/4.
Correct.
And you'll make all those numbers work in the legislation, correct?
Correct.
I'm with that.
Okay. Much shorter meeting than I thought.
Is everybody, yeah, everybody needs to be clear on it, right?
We're just all clear.
Okay.
With what? Mayor Mavis made, you take the 3% increase each of the four years that Matt was in office?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, you took his salary plus 3%, plus 3%, plus 3%, plus 3%, and came up with this number.
Correct.
And then we go 3% from there.
Correct.
Sure I'm clear?
So, that's a 12% raise then.
If that's what the, is that what the increases were over the last four years? Were they all 3%?
Yes.
Yeah. Which is what everybody else got too.
So, I was, I was looking at it wrong. So, it's actually, the mayor, the mayor's numbers are, he's getting a 12% raise then?
No.
What? No.
No.
What did Bruce just say?
No. Each, each year, you add 3%.
He already got to 3%.
So, his current, yeah, his current salary is 74875, and you add 1498, or 1,500, and that gets you to the 76373.
And that's what the difference is between what Mayor Mavis made and what Matt started out?
Correct. And then you, we would add 3% to that 76373, which would put him at 78664.
This way Bruce made a little-
It's about, it's about 5%.
And I, for the new ones that are sitting here that weren't here when Mayor Starr took seat, I was one that, that spoke to council, and I, and Bruce can stand behind me on this, because he's heard me say it more than once. Even when council come out, I always said, I never thought a person sitting down at the chair in council or administration, so automatically make what that person did in front of them. It doesn't happen, and when, and I always use a math teacher at schools. Math teacher retires after 30 years, they hire a new math teacher. They don't start them out with the raise, the wages a 30-year teacher did. You know that, you worked for schools.
I will, I will disagree with you on this one point. These are elected positions-
I understand.
-that, that typically somebody running for one of these positions has never been in these seats before. That doesn't change the work that they're doing. So, I disagree with, I wasn't on council when the salary was reduced based on who was going into the office. That position is that position, so.
And I base it on the fact that Mayor Mavis sat there for 24 years.
Mm-hmm.
And got all his raises along to 24 years. But that's, and I'm not arguing that point anymore, but that's exactly how that happened, and council voted for that at the time. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that's all. Thank you.
Would anyone like to hear the mayor's point of view on this, since that was a lot of money that was asked for?
Let me, yeah, and don't, something like council-
I would be very happy to do that.
This is for the next year. If everybody sitting here is running contests, including the mayor, there'd be, we're voting on the position. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman, and, and council. First of all, we do compensation analyses for all of the positions here in the city. It's not, and, and elected offices need to also receive that same consideration. And Mrs. Sevold, you said something at the last council meeting, that governments all over the world, for that matter, are having a hard time finding qualified candidates to run for local office. Local office. And so, part of that is the compensation, part of it is, are, are other things, certainly. And so, the, the figure that the 85,000 was not just thrown out of the air, okay? There was a lot of thought and mathematics and arithmetic that went into that ask, and I just want to make sure that, you understand, we are doing a lot more than we were four years ago. And here are some things that, that Rob and Terry and I are doing that we weren't necessarily all doing, or have to, to monitor. The police and fire, we have more officers, but it's better organized, particularly when we have to watch the, take very, very close look at the evidence trail. We've had major reform in the changing of hours. That has taken a lot of work to get to, to make our operations more effective. And people are generally happier. Not everyone, but generally, most of the officers are happier because of, of the, the work we've been able to do to maximize our efforts. But it takes more supervision and, and more oversight. The fire department, we've seen a, a great deal of enhanced professionalism down there, and also we've been working very hard to increase our contracts with townships to get to, to provide fire services at the five mil minimum level. So, it's fair and equal among all of the townships that we have contracts with. I think, Brian, am I correct in saying we've had a record number of grants? We've had a record number of grants where we're generating millions of dollars for the, the city. And that requires us to have more oversight, more reporting and so forth. And so, Mr. Scott and Mr. Ball certainly are, are doing that. I have to oversee a lot of the seed, the community development block grant stuff as well. And so, with, but also because of this, right now we have five active CDBG projects, but because of our partnership with the county and the township, we're able to harness and leverage more funds coming back into, not only Mount Vernon, but Knox County, the same people who utilize our infrastructure. We do need to, to oversee that planning and that delivery. And so, that's one of the other things. Also, Mount Vernon received its first-ever track grant. That's a big cities grant. That's not the small cities grant. That's the Transportation Review Advisory Commission that provides federal dollars. And so, we received a couple million dollars on that alone, which is for our region, for our, our size of city, that's unheard of. Our fire department has received FEMA grants. We're getting bigger, and more grants takes more reporting and more time on everyone, on everyone's part to make those things happen. 2004 was the last multifamily development that the city had until the, this past year. Our previous quarter of growing was at a quarter percent. For four years, we had no new housing before four years ago. And so, we had a net, new houses of three years of, of net zero also. And so, now we have sort of unkinked the hose, and we're starting to grow, and we're generating more revenue now. Either Brian and I are meeting, or the Safety Service Director reaches out, and we're meeting with area development, doing more develop, meeting with developers, people who may want to, to be here, may want, may want to invest in our community. So, that's, that's happening pretty frequently. We're working with ADF and land bank. As you all know, we started the new community authority, which is up and running. We are official. That is going to be a lot of work that's going, that we're, we're, it's not necessarily an official city commission, correct, Mr. Braun? Yeah. But it is going to take city resources to oversee that. The CRA, the TIFs, that, that Mr. Scott and I will be bringing more information on that at a later date. We've increased our fees and fines for zoning, making the people who were supposed to get a permit and didn't not subsidizing their mistake anymore, and making them pay a fine and pay their fee. So, we're generating revenue in that regard as well. We've generally been able to keep our utilities pretty sustainable, and we have not had a large increase. We still don't qualify for federal aid, correct, Brian, if, in the city of Mount Vernon, because we don't charge enough for our water?
Yep, we don't.
So-
But we do in Clinton Township.
But we do in Clinton Township. So, anyway, we've been able to keep the, the utility rates down a bit. Let's see, we've had a lot of staff changes, which have been for the, for the better, I think. We've reduced overtime in our utilities. We have more certifications from our utility staff than ever before. So, that means better decision-making, better service to the community. We've re, completely reorganized public utilities and public works. Also with this, we've restructured, we've, we've reduced the amount of overtime. Granted, we don't have true winters anymore, but we have more staff per mile of, of plowing to be able to offset that cost, to be able to really maintain safety, as well as more effectively get through the, the operations of, of snow removal and so forth. And also with that has been in these departments, broadbending and cross-training, so that we don't just have a pipe fitter or a camera operator. They can all do sort of these, these, these things. And that has taken a lot of work, and certainly the unions have been very, have, have been open to that as well. But again, we're starting to see more satisfaction, more, people starting to smooth out in their jobs and be able to be more responsive to the public. So, that's, that's another thing. We've had an enormous amount of technology that we've invested in, whereas before- whereas before, we've had, with, with I-Work is one thing, with engineering, but also with the, the work orders and the procurement, where department heads would spend a morning driving around where we would fill purchase orders or requisitions. Now they can submit that from the field. That's saved a lot of time. We still have a lot of paper that we have to work through yet. But nonetheless, it is, it is having a much better effect, where we can keep our staff on mission-centric activities. Not to mention, they also have access to their finances in real time, so they know how much is in their budget on their line items at each time. We are growing. We are going to see a lot of people come to Mount Vernon. And so, that's something that is, is also by virtue generating more revenues. We're also a region, we're part of the region, and reaching out to partners in the region for a number of matters. We've been getting a great deal use of the stormwater utility. Our street department has done an exceptional job with that. They love doing this stuff, and so we can keep them busy. That stormwater generates a million dollars every year, and our staff enjoy, like doing that stuff. We're sending out more letters to the community, more videos, more press releases than we ever had before. We've majorly diversified the commission and board membership. We have an onboarding program for board members. We have bylaws for commissions that were not in existence before. We enforce the disciplinary process now. Our HR practices, we have onboarding and offboarding now. Our annual budget, when we started four years ago, was about 40 million, maybe a little bit more. And now it's over 60 million. So when you add more, there's more responsibility to manage it, and more work gets done. Again, like I said, more for myself, the auditor, and the law director to oversee. And there's more reports. The workforce development program has been an incredible, incredible asset to the city. There's, people are still talking about the banquet that we had in January. They're looking forward to next year's banquet. They are talking about the, the day at the Hiawatha Water Park, where they could just bring their families and just enjoy. Anyway, so that's been, we have really tackled the culture of the city and really living out our mission to provide modern city services with an emphasis on continual improvement, customer service, and equitable laws that support our citizens and visitors while we retain and attract new investors. We're contracting out certain services to maximize our staff's efforts. Unfortunately, our parks department needs to spend time fixing vandalized areas and repairing those, those areas of playground equipment, rather than necessarily have them sit on a lawnmower, lawnmower and mow for every, every hour. So, we are doing a lot more. Our budget is growing. And so, the figure that is out there, that has just scared everybody, was not approached from a, a, it's just pulled it out of the air. Oh, I think this is what it should be. This was done in comparison to other mayors in statutory cities. Average of all mayors, average of mayors and populations from 10,000 to 25,000. Average statutory and average all statutory mayor, mayors for all cities. And I believe Knox Page has reported that at the last, at the last committee meeting, so I won't reiterate that. Anyway, that is why I propose to Ms. Woods 85,000 for my salary. It was not to try to do anything. I'm, I am truly blessed, okay? I, I will take what you decide. But I wanted you to all to know the reasons why that I asked for what I did. Okay?
And if I may, Mayor, so in the conversations I had with these folks who thought long and hard, and they were good conversations, but the proposal is 11.9% increase, nearly 12%. You know, for the auditor, it was 6.6%, and law director, nearly 5%. Those were not percentage increases that council could support at this time, when the rest of the city was getting 3, and this, you know, the community has spoken. I, I really appreciate the recommendation of some sort of committee in the future to do this. It's not fun. These conversations are difficult. But there were lots of conversations, and nearly 12%, I just didn't have the support for you. I don't think we're sitting up here not recognizing the work. Please, please understand that. But when the community speaks and we're looking out for the dollars, you know, I, I had a lot of conversation about trying to get that increase back from the reduction before. I think that was not appropriate, and everybody supports that.
I hope you understand where I'm coming from, too. I see your point. I was, I sat right up there, too, and I understand that.
I have five minutes. Anybody else?
I appreciate what the mayor had to say, to support what Ms. Woods said, and thank you for doing all this, Tammy. I have been approached by two city employees that both said, remember how much the raises you're giving when we come back to the table for the unions. And I think a lot of what you're getting done can't be done with a lot of, without the work of a lot of the people in the city. So, and I truly, you know, we give them 3%. And I, when the, when both people said that, I think that is, when we sit down for those negotiations, we, you guys, I think that's something you gotta stop and think about. I mean, when we're, when we're saying the city's done this much more, and we're all doing this much more, maybe we need to look at our unions. If you truly have the money, and you can truly see you're gonna have the money, maybe we need to look at the people doing the work out on the streets. 180 employees in the city of Mount Vernon? So, thank you.
I would finally note, Ms. Woods, that one of the things you asked for at the very beginning was numbers. And I'm gonna remind you of what those numbers are. The Consumer Price Index rose from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021 at 4.9%. From June 1st of 2000, from July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of 2022, it rose at 8.5%. And finally, for July 1st of 2022, to, July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2023, it rose at 3.2%. All of those times, all of the various groups received 3% raises, so that we've effectively eroded the wages significantly by only staying at 3%. Part of the reason for the initial bump and then going to 3% as part of the initial request was because of that. And I don't believe that there's any, been any discussion about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good.
Any other comments? We are adjourned. We're gonna move now to the human trafficking ordinance. And we've had a lot of correspondence, people have phone calls and emails, the city council people. I know I've received some. So it's a, an issue that drew a lot of attention, and that's with Mrs. Keener with Parks and Lands.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been in contact by, with Dave Drake, who actually is with Ohio Schools of Medical Massage. And he's very much in support of council's work to protect LMTs with legislation similar to what we have, although he and I have talked through the legislation, and he agrees that there are certain aspects that need to change. So I'm really thankful for them to come along and work with us on this piece. Tonight, council has a heavily edited version of this. There are some more copies if anyone would like one. This is not the same legislation which was first presented on the agenda last week. The goal of this legislation is to be a preventative measure for establishments that traffic vulnerable women. And we all know that growth is coming to Mount Vernon. And with positive growth also comes the growth of vices as well. There have been many claiming that there has never been an issue in Knox County. But we should have Ryan Pence here, when the meeting is actually supposed to start, to speak on a specific case that happened in 2016, and to explain what the Mount Vernon Police Department lacked in order to help the women. I know a lot of people have pointed to the 165 that were arrested recently. But those were the Johns in those situations, so those were the ones purchasing it. The women are much harder to help. And so, while we can get individuals who are seeking that type of establishment, it's very difficult to help the women that are stuck and being victimized. This legislation is really in support of licensed massage therapists in our community. The legislative process is just that, it's a process. I expect us to review this for the next couple of weeks and have changes. I'm sure there are more corrections to be made. But I will plan to postpone this at the third reading if we do not have a piece that everyone is happy with. And I really do want the Ohio Schools of Medical Massage to check over everything as well, because like I said, they have been working on legislation with, like this in multiple communities across the state. There's also a House Bill 255, which was introduced by State Representative Kevin Miller, which is very similar in its goals as this piece of legislation, to create preventative measures for trafficking fronts, as have been seen all across central Ohio. We are supposed to start, and he is not here. But I know that... Oh, you cut your hair in between then and now, and I am sorry. I had no idea. So he is here, sorry. So this is Ryan Pence. He is really the one who kind of started this whole ball rolling when he did a training about human trafficking here in Mount Vernon back in May, I believe. And that was when the police department brought me in and said, you know, we didn't have any teeth to work with this specific case. And so, they asked me to start to look into this ordinance. And like I said, this is a process. I want you to hear from him what he thought would be important during that case. And then we can see if this is what we need to help if, if we have another situation, or if there's something different that we need to do. So, thank you for providing your time.
Absolutely. First of all, I know many people sitting in the gallery, and several of you sitting up here. I'm a lifelong resident, pretty much born and raised here. I call this my first home. This is where I live, this is where I've raised my kids. This is where I coach softball. Many of you know me as that. I have a second home. It's for the city of Powell. I'm a detective there, been there since, I think, 23 years of service. Been a detective since 2012. I can't say I represent the city of Powell tonight. I have to obviously be a resident of the city of Mount Vernon. In 2012, when I was promoted to becoming a detective, I was put on the Human Trafficking Task Force, the Central Ohio Human Trafficking Task Force. And I don't carry a caseload there. I don't claim to be an expert. I claim to work a lot of operations with them, undercover operations, to where we arrest Johns, to where we rescue women. And I've had the opportunity to be a part of that. Had a lot of experience. Like I said, I'm not an expert by any means, okay? If you wanna get an expert, we'd have to go much deeper than me, okay? But this is a field that I'm, I'm very passionate about. I'm very passionate about a lot of things. Being a softball coach, I'm passionate about women's rights, security and protection of women. And when I had an opportunity to investigate an Asian massage parlor, I jumped on it. My chief walked into me, and he said he wanted it shut down by Friday. Those were exact words to me. He's like, there's an Asian massage parlor in town, those women are living there, they're being forced to do this, and ultimately, I want it shut down by Friday. I had nothing to shut it down with. Not a single thing. So, after sitting there for a while at my desk, and knowing my chief was extremely upset that this business was even in the city of Powell, I thought about it for a while, and I went up and talked to him, and I said, if, if you give me time, I can, I can get it done. I spent the next six, eight months investigating this business. And it was doing massage, they were advertising as deep tissue massage. To be able to do deep tissue massage in the state of Ohio, you have to have a license, like many of the people here in the gallery have, okay? If you do not have a license, you cannot perform deep tissue massage. Basically, all you're doing is body rubs. Massage, but you're not doing deep tissue. So, this became extremely challenging when we looked at it and said, how are we gonna shut this down? We have a business that is describing deep tissue massage. We had concerns that there was human trafficking going on inside, and we had no teeth in our ordinances to stop it. So, I spent the next six months, well over probably $60,000 of taxpayers' dollars, investigating this business. Meanwhile, my entire desk was cleared. I can only imagine if chief walked in today to one of his detectives and said, your desk is cleared, you're not investigating any other cases but this one case. Or what $60,000 would do to his overtime budget. So, I took it on, and I spent the next six months investigating that. There was connections to a massage parlor in Worthington, Hilliard, and the one in Powell. And ultimately, we were able to shut that business down. The investigative techniques that we used then were exploited in court. And we could no longer investigate them the way that I investigated that case. We couldn't find a single case in the nation at that time that, where an illegitimate massage parlor was shut down. We're not talking about deep tissue medical massages. I couldn't find a case where they are truly shut down with human trafficking. Okay, they should be shut down through zoning, but with criminal charges, we were able to find one. Like I said, after about six months, we were able to conduct a search warrant, investigate that business, rescue numerous women. And then we spent probably another $60,000 in tax dollars, because now we were in charge of taking care of the women that we rescued, the victims. So, we now paid for housing, food, activities, lawyers, and everything else to try to protect them moving forward. We were fortunate in that case. The owners of the massage business went to prison for 10 years. But like I said, our investigative techniques got exploited through the court case. So, the city of Mount Vernon called me when they had a, a business in town that was not legitimate. I gave them my investigative techniques, what I did. Unfortunately, as criminals learn, the techniques that law enforcement are using, they change. And this is no different. Those businesses changed. So how we investigated them then did not work three months down the road when Mount Vernon called. I said, how did you do it? What have we gotta do? It didn't work at that time. They struggled to get inside that business and shut that business down. There were victims in there. And there was victims that got away because we didn't have the proper legislation in place to shut it down. If I'm not mistaken, and I'm sure chief could talk about it more, but I think that business just closed up and moved out. So did those victims. I've had an opportunity to speak in Mount Vernon on human trafficking several times. Obviously, it's a subject that I'm passionate about. I don't think there's anywhere in this legislation that is attacking legitimate massage business. Deep tissue, medical massage. It is definitely attacking people that are not licensed through the state of Ohio. But if I'm going to go get a deep tissue massage, okay, and I've had them done, okay? I wanna know that the person has went through the proper licenses through the state of Ohio to get it done. Okay? If I go into an Asian massage parlor, I wanna know that that person is licensed through the state of Ohio, I'm getting what I'm asking for. the state of Ohio, I'm getting what I'm asking for, and that is a deep tissue medical massage, not a body rub. There's a lot of money spent in these investigations, a lot of taxpayers' dollars spent in these investigations. I'm not saying that the law, the legislation, the way it's wrote is perfect. I don't know, right? That's for everybody else to figure out. But what I do know is we have to find a way to stop these businesses from opening. It affects the community. It affects the profession, because if one of these people sitting in the gallery want to go get a deep tissue massage, and they think that this Asian massage parlor is that, and it's not what it is, the people that are actually practicing good licensed medical massages are being affected. It's an extensive investigation for law enforcement. I was fortunate. I had the FBI. I had the suburbs of Columbus. I had Columbus Police Department. I had every resource I needed to do what I did. The city of Mount Vernon is not. I did. So, whether the way the law is wrote right now is perfect, I don't know. I know this, I know what it's targeting, and it's not targeting the people that are trying to give legitimate medical massages. It's targeting people that are bringing women in here out of Flushing, New York, that are providing these massage services with sexual acts and trying to keep them from out of our city. I say this a lot to people, and I learned this through my investigation, was put yourself in China. You don't speak Mandarin. In a small community like Mount Vernon out in the middle of China, how do you get out? How do you order a taxi to go to the police department, a police department that you're not going to trust? How are you going to get to the airport or the U.S. Embassy and get out? You don't know how to. This is not about street prostitution. This is not about the Johns. This is not about women that are having men come to their hotel. This is about people that want to say that they're massage therapists when they're not, and people go in and sexual action perform. This isn't about the people in the gallery. This is about protecting women that are lost in our society and are performing acts that are disgusting and horrible acts that are being done, people that are being forced to do these acts. As I said, I can't say, I'm not an attorney. I can't say that the writing of that law is exact. I know what the purpose is behind that law, and that is protect innocent victims. And I would like to think a place that I've spent the last 23 years of my life, or excuse me, 40, 40 some years of my life would, I wish I was 23, 40 some years of my life would want to protect them. I get it, it's not a problem today. It could be a problem tomorrow, because they just open up left and right. Drive through the city of Columbus, you'll see a new one tomorrow. I promise you that. I spend every day of my life there, and they will open up here. If there's a demand, they will show up, and I promise you, whether we want to think it or not, there's a demand. Prostitution is one of the oldest professions of all time. It's been around forever. It's not going away, but if we could do something in our small corner to make it better, then we should. This is our small corner in Mount Vernon, Ohio, right? And I think we can make this better here, inside of our city limits. As I said, this is not to attack people that want to perform legitimate massages. This isn't about our Constitution. I've read some of the rebuttals to this. This is not about our Constitution. This isn't people taking rights away, right? We want people in this community to provide this business legitimately with a license. I think that that's all we're trying to get to, is being sure that the people that are doing this are the ones that are supposed to be doing it. So, whether that needs to be reworded more, you know, a couple more times, I don't know, right? I know what it's trying to stop, and for that, I'm in support of trying to stop that. I'm in support of trying to stop human trafficking, and I would hope every single person sitting in this room is in support of stopping human trafficking.
Thank you for coming. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pence?
You want to go first?
Mr. Pence, thank you. Your passion is clear, and I think we can all agree that human trafficking is something that we can't have any tolerance for. We've got to fight. As you say, the real question is about the legislation in front of us, and probably, you know, I don't think you're going to get any no votes for, you know, we don't want human trafficking, right? But the question is the details. And as a law enforcement officer, or maybe if we have to, you know, Mr. Boren or Mr. Warren, help us understand, those of us who are not involved in law enforcement, not lawyers, if a business opens up advertising this, why do the laws, because we've had people speak and say that our current laws cover something like this, help us understand why the current laws don't cover it, and why, and what is, what do we need here in this law?
So, in the Ohio Revised Code, there is a wall that if a person advertises for deep tissue massage, and they don't have the proper license for that, that's a felony to the fifth degree. But there's nothing stopping me today from going down on Main Street, opening up in a body rub, I do body rubs, or I just do massage. I don't do medical massages, right? There's nothing stopping me today from going on Main Street, opening up what I consider a massage business, okay, that is not legitimate. There's nothing stopping that. I can do body rubs. Now, if I want to say I do deep tissue medical massages, and I advertise that, then there is Ohio Revised Code to stop that today as a felony to the fifth degree. But if I don't advertise that, right? So, we look at Asian massage parlors. They don't advertise any longer after my investigation. They no longer advertise deep tissue massage. They advertise massage or body rub.
Another point that we made when we were working on this was that a lot of people have said that prostitution is illegal, but the Mount Vernon Police Department chose not to put undercover police officers into the situation where they were revictimizing these women in order to prove that they were performing sexual acts.
I mean, when they were doing that investigation on the massage business here in Mount Vernon, I was the one that made that recommendation that they do not go in there and revictimize them.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
So, and I have not had time to deeply study this, but so in your estimation, the piece that prevents this from being prosecuted here is a massage establishment being required to get a permit?
Well, what we've reworked the legislation to do is if you're running a massage establishment, you have to employ people with massage therapy licenses. And what the, and the reworked legislation has stripped out a lot of the sort of details to focus on making sure that these establishments only hire licensed masseuses. And so, what this legislation allows is if someone opens up a massage establishment in the city, for us to go in and say, "You have a massage establishment. We have a requirement that you only hire licensed people. Show us their licenses." And that's how we're going, and then a massage establishment that is just here to victimize women, many of whom don't speak the language, is not going to have licensed massage or masseuses, and because of that, we will be able to move against them.
Okay, but I thought the state already said you had to have the license.
Yes.
Well, to do medical massages.
And so, by us requiring these places to have it, it gives us the opportunity to go in and demand their licenses. Otherwise, we don't have the ability to go in and ask to see their licenses.
So, can't we just have legislation that says it's illegal to have these massage body rub places and not penalize the people that are trying to do a business for their license?
But the question becomes is how do we get into there to ask that question? And so, that's why we've structured it the way we have, and we've stripped out a lot of the other things that I think were potentially problematic in the original draft, to just require the licenses, the fire department inspection, and a clean and sanitary place, and that's it.
And this is really very similar to what happens at beauty parlors or barber shops, who all have to have their license posted as well. So, that was the goal, was to make it similar to that.
I just have to, I appreciate your passion. I appreciate, you know, I'm certainly against what's being said. The problem I have with your presentation is profiling Asians. I have several Asians in my family. I've had a massage in Beijing, in a very legitimate massage place. So, I don't like profiling one particular race.
I would agree with you. I talked about Asian massages because that's the one I shut down.
I understand, but I just, I'm sensitive to that.
Right. There's a lot of people that commit body rubs that are all different races, right? And there are human trafficking cases where there's Caucasian women in Columbus right now that are committing or doing massages that don't have the license, right? I'm talking because that's what occurred here. That's what occurred to me. I agree, there is illegal massages being committed with sexual acts and human trafficking among all races. I could show you guys websites today that would show you all races, right? I came here to specifically talk about my case, and the case that I got involved in with Mount Vernon PD, and that both of those were Asian massage parlors. But I agree with you, Mr. Hawkins, that it's not just one race.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
This legislation, is it merely the one you use? Is it your legislation?
That's not mine.
Did we look at his?
They did not pass theirs. Powell had put one forward. Senator Brenner had put one forward, and Kevin Miller has one that is currently in committee. So, this is, there's one in, what is it?
Who'd you say you worked for?
Mason, Ohio.
City Powell.
You said Powell put one forward?
Powell put one forward. It died in committee.
That's correct.
So, you don't have legislation?
Nope.
So, how'd you bust them?
Through some investigative techniques.
Which are now public, and so you cannot reuse them.
Correct.
Have you read any of this?
I, yes, I've seen it.
This is the legislation we had, this is the one we tried to clean it up with.
I haven't seen the cleanup version.
I've got other questions, not for him.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
What are your other questions?
Mr. Boren.
Oh, does anybody, I'm sorry, does anybody else have questions for Mr. Pence? Go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Mr. Boren, I'm assuming you're the one that did all these redactions and highlights?
Yep.
All right. So, the first one, I think we just pretty much copied from somebody else, correct?
We pulled from several different pieces of legislation, yes.
And we, I'm not against anything Mr. Pence just said, but I think we all know why we have an audience here. So, we have to make this right. So, we were told two weeks ago, this is what we had to have.
No, I came to that meeting and said, "I plan for this to be edited multiple times." So, in that meeting, on record, I said, "This is not the finished legislation. I anticipate changes."
All right.
Hence, changes.
So, with all these changes, you're now going to tell me this will hold up in court and everything's good?
Yes, I believe this will.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I believe this will.
Because that's the next step, because I don't want to hear, just like another ordinance that Jay's working on, that we just did four years ago, now it's no good, can't hold it in court. So, I want to make sure with all this work.
The other thing is, this will go back to Ohio's Schools of Medical Massage, who have done legislation like this in support of LMTs across the state. They are working with Kevin Miller on his bill at the State House. They will also be looking at this before it would go forward as well.
So, you're not looking at passage of this or this? Are you going to go through, through reading and postpone definitely?
I will go through readings, and if this hasn't passed everybody, and we haven't read through it and feel comfortable.
So, how are we planning on getting this to those people sitting out there?
We have several copies up here. I'm sure it'll get made available, but the city could probably also post it.
I was going to say, can we post it?
I also gave it to the press, so they will have it as well.
And just one more statement, there was a question about, when he was talking about licensed therapists, I saw a lot of no-no's going on back there. I would like to hear from some of those people, if they would fill out a form at the recess. Thank you.
And that, I think, is all.
Okay.
We are adjourned, and we're now at recess until 7:30 PM. We begin the legislative portion of the meeting. If there are other people that want to speak on matters of city concern, you can fill out a form with the clerk of counsel.
Hey, we apply to speak. We sent in requests.
Yeah.
That's the legislative portion of the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure I should go to the bathroom. They will probably tar and feather me on my way out.
Can we get coffee?
Taryn, Taryn, just to be clear. This, this...
Oh, that was fancy, because you want to speak.
This move, Taryn, this 76, basically moves Matt's current salary up to 1490.
Oh, sorry.
So, imagine when...
There's two people here talking about crosswalks.
Yeah.
Together to talk about crosswalks, and then...
So, I went...
What are we doing with the subject? I'm sorry, is this trafficking issue?
Should've known if it's coming from me.
Sorry, sorry, I'm just going to grab yours.
Go ahead.
I have Asian sisters along, nephews and nieces.
Oh, well, I was waiting. I thought it would become us. You didn't disappoint me.
I'm glad mine's already written.
Aw, I thought it was a love note. Aw, that's a love note. Aw, so Tammy requested this, huh? Okay. Nice going, Tammy. She requested this.
Good to see you. Yes, Met Pollin. She's due.
She says I requested too, so, okay.
It's always my fault. No, stupid, look.
But it's the same as my family requesting.
Who do we give these to, Jay? Just make a pile?
For your life, you want to get it.
Senator Andrew, you know, like, you know, we're asking you to do a bunch of that. Because I always have this, I'll never- And, uh, that's my room. And she goes into the text line, I love her, but he's never off the door. So, I got myself in her office. And we're talking about her caseloads, and I'm like, we're here, aren't we? We're here. So, uh, it was kind of cool. And she knows, uh, like, uh, very high level topic. Regional, yes.
He wants you to go make the copy, they're right there.
So, yeah. I get some, uh, from your all, yeah. It's great, it's awesome.
So, yeah.
It's, uh, it's interesting, it's a different relationship.
So, you want me to pull it and we write it all together?
So it didn't have lines, it didn't have dark and solid.
I wanted you to do it this way. I wanted them to see it this way, to see what you did. Oh, I think you just- Oh.
What are we supposed to do with this?
You know the routine?
Okay.
We open the meeting, we call a roll call, and then we ask the invocations. You come up to the podium, and take the invocation, and the last three percent, the invocation, and the pledge, and then you say, "We mean for the pledge," and then the person just goes, "Please go." Yeah, okay. No, no, no one chose. Yeah, I want to charge, I want to charge admission tonight, but they wouldn't let me. I want to charge admission tonight, but they won't let me. Well, they're bastard, the sidewalk people get first, then we-
So.
At least this is something that's actually all.
Well, I think that that makes sense, but really text me or call me and we'll have coffee. And I would love to have your help on this. So, thank you so much for coming in. Are you gonna speak? You should. I appreciate you coming in because I want to hear what you guys have to say on this because we are not the experts. And the whole point is that we need to hear from the experts to know what will help you and protect your legitimate businesses.
Because that was just initial visit. That is not.
Those are basically just comments.
That was just the one that reached out to me. That's all I mean.
It all costs. Four years ago.
Yes. They are.
I left at thirty plus.
What's thirty-five and fifty?
Thirty plus.
No, I will give you my phone number and you can call me. The point is not tunnel vision. Any comments you want to make on this, I will take into consideration because that is the point, is that we, experts, are here to get you guys in the field to tell us what you need.
And nothing would get it.
That's what these six.
It's now seven-thirty P.M. Gonna call the legislative portion of Mount Vernon City Council to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mr. Severns.
Here.
Mr. Mayhem.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Hillier.
Here.
Mrs. Seville.
Here.
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by Dan Humphrey from Touch Point Ministries. Please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge. Dan?
It's a little bit unusual probably for a non-pastor to be given the invocation, but we are a faith-based organization, Touch Point Marriage and Family Resources. We're glad to be able to be here tonight.
Glad you're here.
Let's bow our heads. Father, as we come to this meeting tonight, we just pray that your spirit will be in the midst of the conversation, that the meeting will be orderly, and that you will give wisdom to each of the council members. We thank you, Lord, for the dedication of these men and women who are willing to serve. And we just pray for the upcoming elections as those that will be stepping back and those that will be newly elected. We pray, Lord, for also, tonight, we think about a former council member, Josh Kirby. It was just a year ago that he resigned for health reasons, and so we do pray for Josh and his family. We thank you for the opportunity that we have to meet as a, in a free country. And we know there's a lot of turmoil going on throughout the world, but we just thank you that we are able to meet freely. We pray these things now in your name and be in the midst of the conversation and discussions tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, on your packets were the minutes from the September twenty-fifth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So move.
Second?
They moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Received petitions and communications. Mr. Hill, I understand we have one communication for you to read.
Yes, one came in this morning. This is from Jennifer Jaeger, two-fifty Parrott Street, Mount Vernon. "I am ready to express my concern for the safety of the schoolchildren in our community, the ones who walk or bike to and from school every day. As you know, my son got hit by a car while crossing Martinsburg Road after school. But my son's accident is not an isolated event. Car accidents are not uncommon on Martinsburg Road near the school entrance. The problem is that there is not only no crosswalk for students to use on Martinsburg Road, but also no sidewalk to use once across the street. I believe it is imperative for the safety of so many who live on Ames Street, Adamson Street, Parrott Street, Delano Street, Spruce Street, and beyond, that the city do no less than add a crosswalk and put a sidewalk on the west side of Martinsburg Road for everyone in the community. Thank you for your consideration, Jennifer Jaeger."
Thank you. Counsel, on your packets are the committee reports from like six different committees for your review. I see no liquor control licenses tonight or proclamations. We do have several people wanting to speak on matters of city concern. Going to break this into three portions. The first is student safety and student crosswalks. We have, and then the second, and we'll ask all these on student safety and on the physical therapy, I'm sorry, the massage therapy, to limit your comments to four minutes. We do have another one on, from the public health department, that we'll give a little more time than that. So we'll start with Jennifer Jaeger on student safety and student crosswalks. Is Jennifer here? Please let me, please state your name and address and limit your comments to four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Jaeger. I live at two-fifty Parrott Street. I should kind of feel like the letter that was just read kind of sums it all up, but, give me just a second, may, I don't think it's any secret that the, to the city, oh yeah, I don't think it's any secret that we're all anticipating population growth and all. And I don't think it's, I also do not believe it's a secret that when it comes to the safety of our children who walk or bike, there are major concerns. Or is it a secret? I know I spoke with one of you, thank you, Mike, earlier, and I think Tammy as well, thank you for returning my calls. I was pretty nervous about speaking tonight, so I appreciate you calling back.
Thank you.
And I believe one of you noted that even when your children was growing up, it wasn't concerned, and there were issues. But what I found out, reflecting after the accident, there is really, the intersection makes for drivers to be very anxious because we have branches coming in in multiple different areas, where there's no perpendicular way to put really, so we have multiple people trying to make left turns. That creates anxiety amongst our drivers. And then again, with our walkers, because when you have to stand around for so long waiting to make a left turn or to be able to get out at all, you get a little anxious. I wonder if you're able to get out at all. So we have our students then in that situation where they also, and I don't think it's right for us to ask them to walk away down to Riley Street to cross and then continue walking back down to their street. And what I had found out is they can't just put a crosswalk in because then they would have to have a sidewalk to walk to for, according to ordinance. And then they would also need to make sure it's ADA compliant and so forth. So, this isn't the first time I've, I've mentioned it or asked. And maybe my, there was a survey came out, I believe, I don't know, a year ago, they, it was, I think, kind of titled, "Walk, Bike, or Roll", however you get, you want your, you want your feedback. And I did respond to that saying. I felt that there needed to be some more safety, put in, some things put in place so that our kids can get to to and from school and be.
Can you put the mic closer to you?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I mentioned it then in the survey and responded back to that saying. I really felt that there needed to be something done so that our kids can walk home from school and walk to school in the dark during most of the school year. And, yeah, in the letter I did say that I believe it's imperative that we do, we do no less than have a crosswalk and a sidewalk on the other side of the road. But I kind of changed my mind now. I think there should be one on Parrott Street too, put a sidewalk there as well, all the way down. That is a place where, I mean, even just for another reason for a sidewalk on Martinsburg, it's not safe to bike there either, and there's no bike lane. And I think a lot of people would like to be able to ride their bikes there. There are people who bike to school as well. There are many people who walk their dogs in that area. I think it's just imperative for the community. Another thing I've noted too, in my notes, I am home at, at least often enough during the school hours to know that there are many more accidents that maybe the police don't even know about because they are fender benders or whatnot. It happens and all during that, at that intersection.
Jennifer, four minutes. Please conclude.
In conclusion, I feel like I've, I feel like I've concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another person, another person wanted to speak on crosswalk safety is Emily Chanel. Emily, you state your name and address. Limit your comments to four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Emily Chanel. I live at two-nineteen Parrott Street. I've lived on Parrott Street for eight years, and all of those eight years I've had at least one child either attending the Mount Vernon Middle School or the Mount Vernon High School. My family loves living in that neighborhood. One thing we do enjoy doing is walking. As Ms. Jaeger mentioned, we often attend activities at the school, on the campus, at the stadium, athletic events or whatnot. Our children are often involved in those. We really see no need to drive, so we walk a lot over that way. We also enjoy walking on the MVNU campus as well. It's just beautiful. So, the reason I am here tonight is also to mention the lack of a crosswalk on Route five-eighty-six Martinsburg Road, as well as the lack of a sidewalk on Parrott Street. I checked with the Mount Vernon City School District Transportation Department. They do not provide busing to children that live within one mile of the school. So for context, one mile north is about to Wendy's, one mile south is about to the Country Club between Lake Home and Twin Oak Elementary. And then one mile our direction is to the very end of Parrott Street where it deadens on to Columbus Road. So all children in that, in that wide area do not even have the option to ride a bus to school. And so I asked the Transportation Department next if they could provide an approximate number of children that this impacts. They could not do that, but they did say within our specific neighborhood, which includes Parrott Street, Delano, Adamson, and Ames, there are twenty-eight households that have children and them that attend the Mount Vernon Middle School and High School. So those children have to walk or find other means of transportation to get to school. The crosswalk issue, as was mentioned already, there is, there are many reasons why it's a dangerous area for children to cross. One concern is that children are as young as eleven years old, sixth grade, and they are, you know, tasked with doing this often alone. And as was mentioned, in the dark, in the fall and winter, it's dark in the morning. They also face a high proportion of teenage drivers, a very high proportion of teenage drivers. And also, in between Parrott Street and Delano, across the street is where the entrance to the Career Center is. So you have three streets in a very short period, a very short distance, with a lot of cars turning left and right. There's a lot that the young students need to think about. Not only are they just simply crossing the street, but they're watching other cars, you know, turning into that area as well. Additionally, there's no school zone speed limit in that area either. Also, in support of Ms. Jaeger, as far as the request for a sidewalk on Parrott Street, there is a sidewalk that runs along Newark Road, and there's a crosswalk that comes to Parrott Street. It empties down to a lawn, someone's front yard. It's, it's there. I think that's a great place for it to be. We also could just put another one at the other end of the street, you know, on Martinsburg Road. The reason I think Parrott Street is important, the four other streets, the four streets total in our neighborhood that I mentioned, three of them are only two blocks long, whereas Parrott Street is significantly longer. It crosses four roads, so it's a major thoroughfare. Those four roads being five-eighty-six Martinsburg Road, Route thirteen Newark Road, Columbus Road, and also six-sixty-one Granville Road. And then a lot of people, I believe, probably cut through to Harcourt Road via, what's it called? Johnson, thank you, Johnson Avenue. So Parrott Street is a major thoroughfare for a lot of traffic. As residents of that street, we do see a lot, a lot of traffic. And a lot of people that love to rev their engines, they love to drive really fast. We have had many close calls, walking.
Please do your, your closing comments.
Thank you. I have provided a photo that I took in the morning of a student walking to school, if you want to pass that around, so you can see how difficult it is to view the children at night. I also want to make mention of some other residents of our neighborhood that have attended tonight, if I may. We have Rachel Hoffman, who's a resident of Parrott Street. Bruce and Carrie Dobbinmeyer, also residents of Parrott Street. Lori Gaston, resident of Delano. And Megan Kush, resident of Parrott Street. There may be others I'm not aware of, and the Jaeger family that has come with us tonight, or not with us, but they also attend. And as you heard, there was an accident involving their son, which I think is critically important, and I know it's not the first one. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking on, on student safety and crosswalks? We'll move now then to the Health Department, Knox Public Health, Carmen Bartudo, to speak on social determinants of health.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me come talk. Again, my name's Carmen Bartudo. I will give you the Health Department address, since I'm here on behalf of the Health Department, one-one-six-six-zero Upper Gill Crest Road. Don't actually live there, although it feels like I do. So I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about something that's very near and dear to the Health Department's heart. It's social determinants of health and health equity. And these are terms that sadly have kind of become politicized. And really, it's just a fancy way of saying that there are people in our community that don't have the resources that they need to be the healthiest that they can be. I do not think that that is some groundbreaking, earth-shattering news to the City Council. But the Health Department, because we are the Health Department and we are concerned about the health of all of our residents, that is something that we looked at pretty heavily and we talked about. What can we do as a community, not just to close those gaps that we're seeing and to bring our health outcomes up to a better standard, but how do we train our staff? So our environmental health sanitarians that are going out every day and talking to business owners that are struggling to pay for their permits because of X, Y, and Z. Or people who own homes, but they can't pay to fix their sewer systems. How do we train our nurses who are going out and seeing our elderly population, and they're seeing people who need ramps to get into their homes or don't have access to transportation, but they don't know how to get to those resources? So how do we talk about it in a way that removes a political piece to it and really just presents education and information? So what I'm not going to do tonight is lecture you on all the data. One, I don't have time for that. You guys hear enough of that, I'm sure. And if you really are interested and you want to have a longer conversation about what that actually looks like, and we can talk about some of the data in our community, happy to do that. But now is not the place for that. So, can I go? Do I have a, thank you. You can keep going.
Back?
Back just one. So, just to give you guys an idea of where our staff stood before we did this training that I'm going to talk to you about and share about what's going on in your city, community, and the people that, you know, work for, for and within the city. We talked to our Health Department staff about whether or not they could name what the social determinants of health were, and if they could even tell us what health equity was. And that was a resounding no, which was, some of them could, not all of them, which was really scary for us, right? If we're going to go talk about these things and we're going to talk to people in the community that have the power to make decisions, you all, we have to make sure our staff is of the same mindset and the same understanding. So what I want to share with you all tonight is the Health Department has worked for about a year, can you go forward one more, Mayor Star? Thank you. Has worked for about a year developing a training on what social determinants of health are, what health equity is, and what it looks like in our community. One of the most frustrating things working in a public health department in a small rural community is every time you go to a training, people talk about things from an urban perspective. They talk about things from a racial perspective. And while those are very important, they do not resonate in a community like Knox County and in a community like Mount Vernon because we can't relate to the examples that they provide. So, me being me, I said, forget this, I'm just going to make our own. So we've put together a training that has eight modules that's meant really to just give a basic, ground-level understanding of what social determinants of health are, how they look in our communities, and the things that we're doing within Knox County to fix those. One of my favorite things that we did within this training is we put together these videos that were done in-house, and we talk with our community partners. The mayor was part of those. And we talk about things like economic stability and neighborhoods and built environments, and how we're working as a community to do things that can improve those issues. So we talk about them, we educate the people that go through the training, but we also brag on Knox County and the things that we're doing well. Because I think it's very easy to get caught up in all of the data that's negative, but it was also really important for us to highlight the positive as well. So those are in there. But then in addition to all of that, so there's, like I said, eight modules, we've done all this work to put together these videos, and it really, really serves.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the extra time. I could talk about this for two hours, but we don't want to be here. It really does serve as, like I said, that ground-level understanding of what social determinants of health are, because you're going to start to hear that more. Not just from the Public Health Department, but our state legislator is talking about it. They're looking at something called health equity in all policies. So our job then is the Knox, Knox Public Health, our Public Health Department, is to be the education tool for our community. Can you go ahead one more, Mayor? This is just an example of what it looks like, what some of them look like. A lot, they're not all the same. Can you go ahead one more? Another example, that's the, can I read from here? The access to healthcare tool. Okay, one more. And then one more. So I do want to highlight this because this is what we're trying to talk about with all of our elected officials and people that are passing policy. So, in health, we've heard these things called health equity in all policy, which is what I spoke about the state legislator is looking at doing. If you were to look at that from a city policy and try to do that, try to run that through their framework, it's too robust. The way that they've done this health equity in all policies framework is it's designed for big state and federal level policy, which is great and wonderful, but we are a small community. So what we did at the Health Department was we developed our own version of that. We developed a pared-down version that really walks through any policy, any city program that you may want to pass, and it looks at it for equitable standards. Now, that doesn't mean that if it doesn't meet an equitable standard, we can't proceed with it. All it does is it help us keep, it helps us keep equity in mind. It helps us say, okay, we're going to pass this policy, but we're noticing that there may be an issue with transportation. This may create a negative effect for some individuals who potentially couldn't afford whatever this policy is outlining, whether it's an increase in a fee, or whether it's an increase in a fine. And it doesn't, like I said, doesn't mean we can't proceed. It just helps us keep things in mind as we're looking to continually build the most equitable community that we can. Can you go forward one more, Mayor? So, the big question is, does this actually work? And the resounding answer is yes. Our staff that have gone through this whole training are able to name all five. They can talk about them in an educated fashion, and they can talk about health equity in an educated fashion. One of my favorite examples, any of you that are on regional planning or you've attended a regional planning meeting, you may have seen some of our sanitarians there. One of them, his name's Kyle Shackle, he won't care that I shared this story today. But Kyle was at regional planning, and we were talking about all the growth that Mount Vernon's going to have and how great this is. And they were talking about, where are we going to put all these people? What kind of houses are we going to build? What's going to happen? You know, are there things that we're not thinking about? And Kyle, because he did this training, felt empowered enough to stand up and say, well, you guys aren't thinking about social determinants. And they said, well, what does that mean? And that was my lightbulb moment of, okay, we have to talk about this outside of the Health Department. And Kyle said, well, if you're building homes and you're building apartments, are they affordable? And what does affordable mean to a small community like this? Are they safe? Are they built with materials that are going to be safe and adequate for the people that are living in them? So, the answer to your question is yes, it does work. It does really provide that education. And our biggest goal at the Health Department is to put this type of information into the hands of people who are making decisions for residents. Because what happens in this chamber affects the citizens of Mount Vernon, it affects Knox County in general, and then it affects the health of us, which I know sometimes we don't think about that, right? We don't think about crosswalks as how they affect health, but they do. We don't think about transportation and active transportation necessarily in the framework of health, but it is very secular and it all ties together. So, I'm not really here tonight to ask anything of you. I'm here to really share that we have this resource available. And I know several of you, this is not your only role. So as you're out in the community and you're working with your other organizations, just keep in mind that we're available as a resource. This training is available. I have a handout. I'm going to hand this to you, if you don't mind. Can you take one and pass him down? Thank you. And this just explains everything that's available. If this is something that the council may be interested in pursuing for city employees, if it's something you may be interested in pursuing for the council, just all of you. So I just wanted to present that that is available. I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, if you want more information or more data, if you want to have a really data-heavy conversation, we can do that, just not in this chamber. Because I feel like everyone behind me would get very bored.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to, several people want to talk about massage therapy. And ask that you state your name and address and limit your comment to four, four minutes. If you are just going to say something that's repeating that somebody else has already said, please pass, because there are, there are ten people who want to speak on this particular topic. And we'll start with Laura Johnson.
My name is Laura Johnson, and I live in Belleville. I'm originally from Knox County. I didn't write anything, because honestly, I didn't plan on speaking. There's a lot of really good talent behind me. There are therapists in here. I know one specifically, it's been working for thirty years, as a licensed massage therapist under the State of Ohio Medical Board, which is who regulates us. I myself have been doing it, I don't know, twelve years, something like that, ten years, kind of lose track after time. You add in horses and animals before that, probably twenty years. The wording in this is disgusting. I'm not a masseuse. I'm many things, if you can tell. I'm not a masseuse.
health department. Um, and Kyle said, well, if you're building homes and you're building apartments, are they affordable? And what does affordable mean to a small community like this? Are they safe? Are they built with materials that are going to be safe and adequate for the people that are living in them? So the answer to your question is yes, it does work. It does really provide that education. And our biggest goal at the health department is to put this type of information into the hands of people who are making decisions for residents, because what happens in this chamber affects the citizens of Mount Vernon, it affects Knox County in general, um, and then it affects the health of us, which I know sometimes we don't think about that, right? We don't think about crosswalks as how they affect health, but they do. We don't think about transportation and active transportation necessarily in the framework of health, but it is very secular and it all ties together. So I'm not really here tonight to ask anything of you. I'm here to really share that we have this resource available. Um, and I know several of you, this is not your only role. Um, so as you're out in the community and you're working with your other organizations, just keep in mind that we're available as a resource. This training is available. Um, I have a handout. I'm going to hand this to you, if you don't mind. Can you take one and pass them down? Thank you. And this just explains everything that's available. If this is something that the council may be interested in pursuing for city employees, um, if it's something you may be interested in pursuing for the council, um, just all of you. So I just wanted to present that that is available. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, if you want more information or more data, if you want to have a really data-heavy conversation, we can do that, just not in this chamber. Because I feel like everyone behind me would be very bored.
Thank you, Carmen. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to, several people want to talk about massage therapy. Uh, and, uh, ask that you say your name and address, and let me comment the four, four minutes. If you are just going to say something that's repeating that somebody else has already said, please pass, because it, there are, there are 10 people who want to speak on this particular topic. And we'll start with Laura J- uh, Johnson. Uh, please...
My name is Laura Johnson, and I live in Belleville. Um, I'm originally from Knox County. Um, I didn't write anything, because honestly, I didn't plan on speaking. Um, there's a lot of really good talent behind me. There are therapists in here. I know one specifically, it's been working for 30 years as a licensed massage therapist under the State of Ohio Medical Board, which is who regulates us. I myself have been doing it, I don't know, 12 years, something like that, 10 years. Kind of lose track after time. You add in horses and animals before that, probably 20 years. The wording in this is disgusting. I'm not a masseuse. I'm many things, if you can tell. I'm not a masseuse. This is one of my instructors. One of many. One of the biggest things she taught us was masseuse gives happy endings. I don't do that. This is degrading. If I wanted to give happy endings, I'd go to Vegas and I'd get paid for it. I don't get paid enough in my practice. I'm glad you guys took out the underwear part, though. I mean, really glad about that. We already pre, all of these, this money forward on a yearly, every couple of years, we pay for our business licenses, we pay for our medical licenses, and you guys want us to pay $50 for you to come in and inspect our offices? When the state medical board already trusts that we run a clean office, that we wear appropriate clothing? And not only that, we work under HIPAA. Letting you into our office, especially if there's clients, risks our license. Sorry, I'm not willing to do that. I actually need to get back to school. I'm going to let this wonderful talent tell you guys what they think, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next person is Scott Pons.
Thank you, Council President, members of Council Administration. Um, I'm here again, once again, on behalf of my client, Healthy Center Massage Therapy and Acupuncture LLC. One of the reasons I'm here is she is so furious and so insulted by this legislation that she has difficulty even speaking about it. And the reason why is this legislation is fatally flawed. It was flawed from the beginning. Its amendments are still flawed. Why? Because it attempts to label licensed, regulated medical professionals in the same boat as what we heard before. Now, people say they have good intentions, but I'm really beginning to doubt them because words speak louder than intentions. Took me less than 15 minutes today to research other cities that have addressed this issue. And in every single case, they specifically exempt persons that are licensed by the State Medical Board of Ohio. This legislation, this ordinance, it's not a good starting point, it's not a good first step. The fact that its sponsor says it's merely poorly drafted or overbroad is deeply troubling to me, and it should be for all of you, too. This legislation, as written and as amended, is sexist and unprofessional. I should not have to explain to you why, for a third time, the words speak for themselves. Plenty of Ohio citizens, cities have ordinances that address these issues without disparaging law-abiding residents that are operating legitimate businesses. This ordinance should be withdrawn or tabled immediately, period. Now, we heard earlier, uh, for a half an hour or so from an officer that I know personally, he's a good officer. He hasn't read this legislation, he's not a lawyer. Um, he, he has good intentions, but this legislation does not address that. And worst of all, it will lead to litigation with the city. As amended, it creates two different classes of licensed massage therapists in this county or in the city. That's called an equal protection issue. If you're a licensed massage therapist that work for a doctor, you're exempt. If you're a licensed massage therapist that works for a massage clinic, you're under these regulations. And folks, did we not learn under COVID that we do not need to give our health department more authority to regulate on top of the regulations that are already there? Folks, table this legislation. If you want to do it, start over from scratch. There are a dozen cities in Ohio that have done it the right way. This is not even close. Thank you. There are questions?
Thank you. Next is Dina Huli. Put your name and address, and let me comment the four minutes.
Hi there. My name's Dina Huli. I'm an LMT. I practice down on 730 South Main Street. So some things you should know about LMTs. Most of us have over 600 hours of training. With our training, we're required to watch human trafficking videos. Have you guys had to do that? Maybe you should. We are taught ethics, we are taught boundaries, we are taught cleanliness. There's a lot that's included in our education that you're not giving us credit for. We are licensed by the Ohio State Medical Board. We are, most of us, professionals of the AMTA, where you should be getting information from, there's an Ohio chapter and the national branch, and also the American Body Workers' Massage Professionals. We pay license fee to the state. We pay for professional memberships for our, um, insurance. We take continuing education classes on a yearly basis. We pay rent and supplies. And now you want to add $50 for an application to you and also a healthcare charge? I didn't get a 3% raise this year. You all just, just did. I've served on the AMTA Ohio Board as secretary for five years and also as their education chair. We work hard educating our members. We talk about trafficking, we talk about people turning things in like that that they see. We per, um, display our license. If you go to a massage therapist that doesn't have a, a state board license, get out of there. And you should be telling your friends the same thing. We offer yearly education to all of our members and encourage it. You're not only going to hurt us, the people who are not doing the trafficking, you're going to hurt the people that we pay rent to. If you pass this, I'm leaving Mount Vernon. I will not practice in the city. So the person I pay rent to no longer has that income. I won't be paying Mount Vernon taxes because I'm not practicing in your city. So there's parts of this you need to think about, but you're hurting us. This thing that you're protecting us, that's laughable. You need to protect people against trafficking, but we're not the people that you're protecting them from. We're not the cause. You need other policies to take care of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Topman.
Uh, Dan Topman, I live in Apple Valley. I've been a massage therapist since 96. I've worked really, really hard. I have been an instructor, I've traveled all over the country instructing. This is the biggest F you to us that I've ever seen. You, uh, if you wrote this and you, you handed this out, if you agreed to hand this out, you owe us all an apology. It's degrading to all of us, talking about just everything. You call us masseuses. We're licensed massage therapists. You call doctors just guys. You didn't do that. People always say, if you, people will show you who they are, you have to believe them. I believe who you are now. I believe what you wrote, and you passed it on. I have T, PTSD patients coming into my office. You come into my office when one of those guys are on my table and they're going through an event? It's not going to be, it's not good for anybody. Do you understand any of that?
Would you like my card?
No, I don't want your card.
I'm willing to hear anyone, one-on-one.
This, I'm so mad right now, because all I want to say is F.
I understand that.
Right? But I can't say it that many times in four minutes. The, 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 you know, if our clients, the thing is, we're all garbage men, right? We get people that nobody wants to fix. They give up on everybody. We take them, because you know what? We have passion. We love what we do. We love what we do. And you've seen it in every one of us in here. We have passion. This tells us that we're nothing. It's horrific. And telling us to check our underwear? That's, it's ludicrous. Ludicrous. You know, I don't know the answer for human trafficking. It's not coming after massage therapists. You can't come into our offices, HIPAA laws are going to be exposed, I'll sue you. I will, I guarantee you. You come into my office, if I have somebody on my table, I will sue you for HIPAA. I have, I work at a law firm also, and they would love to do that for me. I've already showed this to them. My lawyers, oh, they're excited. So that's all I have to say. I can't, I, if I could say how level 10 I'm mad, it'd be like a 20. And I've been doing this for 30 years, 30 years. I've trained some of these people. It was the first massage class. You didn't ask any of us. You didn't ask the community. You went out of town for that, even. Why don't you talk to us? That's all I have to say.
Mr. President, can I have a point of personal privilege? So I have worked really hard on trying to find things that I think will help people. And, and you're right, it's not. I have talked to massage therapists that I know locally and asked for their opinion.
Really? What are they doing? Are they here? Yeah, where are they? Why aren't they here?
Let's just, we're not at that part of the...
Let's, let's move on. Next, next person is Derek Scott.
First off, I want to express a little bit as far as the legalities and why you guys might be concerned as to how someone with no license whatsoever can give a massage. And the state licensure or, uh, legalese, if you will, the only term that is required by a non-massage therapist, licensed massage therapist to use, they are not allowed to use massage therapy. They are not allowed to advertise that whatsoever. They are allowed to relax, or allowed to advertise relaxing massage. They are allowed to advertise sports massage. Neither one of these should be true whatsoever, but they are allowed to advertise this. I personally have a problem with this. I personally believe that we also, as massage therapists, should be required to get continuing education credits, whether you agree with me or not. All right? I also think that maybe you should be grandfathered after 20 years that you no longer have to do that. Why do I say that? Because I've got three NMT certifications. Um, like Mike Pence, I do have sympathy for the young girls in this town. I was a softball coach, too, and I've studied his methods to be a better coach for those So I understand where he's trying to come from and do emphasize, or empathize for this. Um, the whole point in me, uh, and actually, the whole reason why I quit becoming a, or being a coach was that I could go back to school to become equine certified in massage as well. Why? Because COVID was a nightmare. And to all of you who have made it through COVID as an NMT, I congratulate you on doing it. It has been brutal. It has cost us a lot. I know my, my business was down to almost nothing, and I had to completely start over. I stayed off of Facebook for eight years, had to get back on Facebook just so I could advertise and let people know that I was still doing this. Once again, uh, the, the wording of this is just absolutely atrocious. I have been personally dropped down and crippled in pain, um, from saying, from things that I've, uh, you know, different issues that I've had. And I can tell you right now, at least three people that have helped me in this building. They've helped me get back on my feet, they've helped me get back to doing my job. I have numerous clients that got a hold of me when we got shut down. And I can tell you this, as far as the word parlor goes, y'all can kiss it. I, no one liked it when, uh, when, uh, when, um, Mike Pence used it, or, or, yeah, uh, not, not Mike Pence.
Ryan.
Uh, when it was, when our governor used it with COVID, no one liked it. I didn't like it. I really am not a fan of that word. I go to an office every day. I'm pretty certain all of them go to an office every day. You don't call a doctor's office a doctor's parlor. All right? We do pay state medical licenses. Do I agree that there should not be any massage unless you are licensed or certified? I absolutely 100% agree to that, because it makes other people like us who are professionals who put in that time and put in that education in hours, look like chump change when someone believes that this is actually acceptable or a massage. I can honestly say that one of the oldest jokes I've ever heard is just how all the sexual implications that are indicated just on a flippant joke, jokingly basis to me, constantly, constantly. It's gotten better over the years because people know I don't have the temperance for it, but I have heard those comments, hey, do you know any hot female therapist? You bet your ass I do, but you know what? I'm not going to send them to you because I have more respect for them than to let you deal with them.
Please conclude.
Uh, I don't see where money involved, just scraping for money to, you know, to hit other people. He said, you know, this only affects the massage parlors. This still affects people, once again, like Dina said, that are renting from other comp, uh, that are renting from other people as well, um, that just, we already have our own fees, we already have our regulations, we're already being looked at, we're already subject to being searched, anyway. Change the subject to something other than us and actually take it towards the problem.
Thank you, Dina.
Thanks.
Next person is Marcia Summitt.
I defer to Dina.
Defer? Thank you. Kate Myers.
Kate Myers, 106 Danville, but my offices are in Danville and Mount Vernon at 306 East Park Street. Um, honestly, I wrote this before I saw the new redacted version, and almost everything still holds. So I own a therapeutic spa here in town, and I'm here in objection to this, because it places an unnecessary, da-da-da, unnecessary burden on small businesses with no benefits to my clients, and it doesn't benefit the community at all. I've served as a therapist since 2012, after completing rigorous training and passing state medical board testing. In total, I have over 3,000 hours of professional training. How much do you have? These medical boards, they set the standard for how my profession operates, including the requirements to ensure the safety of both my clients and myself. Massage therapists like me are licensed by the same medical board that licenses your doctors, nurses, and physical therapists. Also, if you're not aware, there is a difference between a license and a certification. Today, I'm standing for the 37 therapists who reside in Knox County. 26 are currently active, and I would say most of them are here. Those who come to work here, I do know of about five that travel to this county to work here as a professional therapist. Many of us work in our own clinics. We are the small business owners. This proposed ordinance, even though you have edited it, targets every single one of us. How many are in your own office? Thank you. To read this ordinance brings into sharp focus how prevalent the stereotype of a massage therapist as a sex worker remains. This is a stereotype that we fight every single day in TV, movies, and worst of all, in person. Many therapists have been affected by the stereotypes, and each and every one will have a story, if not many. For this city to consider this ordinance feeds into this very incorrect stereotype and converts it into law. I find it personally and professionally insulting to be treated as if my morality is suspect simply for my chosen career. I do not imagine anyone here today would consider a nurse to possibly be a sex worker. Please do not continue the cycle of misinformation. I'm told this ordinance was written due to requests for law enforcement to have more tools. However, in 2016, law enforcement successfully shut down a sex trafficking operation. Who called in those tips? Massage therapists did. It took a massage therapist to push it to actually get it shut down. The state medical board demands videos on how we recognize human trafficking to renew our licenses every two years. We keep our eyes open for such places so that we can protect the public and our profession. Massage has been used as a front for illicit businesses. This is due to a loophole in the state medical board's code, or the state of Ohio's definition of massage. As you know now, practitioners of relaxation massage are exempted from being licensed. This loophole is addressed in Senate Bill 55, which has been languishing in the state senate since 2021. I have a copy here today if you would like to look at it. If the city's concern is to regulate what I'm wearing... If the city's concern is to regulate what I'm wearing, then pass this ordinance. If the city's concern is the safety of women and trafficking victims, then adopt Senate Bill 55 as a framework to close the massage loophole locally. I ask the committee to do the right thing. That is all.
Next we have Jackie Morowski.
Did I say it right?
Well, I don't think that I can even say everybody's hit everything.
Thank you.
Jackie Morowski, my, my office is at 100 East Gammer Street, and I think this is appalling. It harms me and my business, and it harms a lot of us. As everyone else has said, we work very hard. I do multiple trainings every year to grow my business and to learn different ways to help my clients in the best way I can. This just embarrassed me. I had a horrible weekend because, you guys, I found this. I got attacked by two people saying, oh my gosh, what is going on about massage? I had no idea. Because nobody bothered to consult anybody. And then you find it, and it's unbelievable. And then you want to charge us? Why? We pay enough people. And there is no other business in the city of, in the city of Mount Vernon that has to pay an annual fee for a permit to be in business. So why us? Why the witch hunt? That's all I have to say.
Next is Crystal Kettle? Make sure I pronounce that right.
It's Crystal Kettle. I live in Fredericktown, that's all right, 50 South Main Street, Fredericktown, but I drive to Mount Vernon to work. I'm on hiatus right now because I have a six-week-old baby. But I can speak for everyone else in this room too, that I've been practicing massage for 20 years, and in the city of Mount Vernon at the same office for 16 years. And I guess I'll take a different angle, that I agree with what Kate said about getting together with the state of Ohio. That if the cities have to deal with this issue on a city-by-city basis, that's ridiculous. This is a state-of-Ohio issue that we should take up with the whole state. There should be just different legislation written for the entire state, so that there aren't these gray areas. And when I was in school in 2007, same thing, they said that you could be a massage practitioner, and you could do relaxation massage, and there was no license. So that is a gray area that should have been changed by now. I agree, I think. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Robin Smith.
Well, I'm going to take a way different approach. So, I was an instructor to some of the people here. As some of you might know, taught program for a long time, been almost licensed 20 years myself. In the city of Mount Vernon, it's been about 70 years ago, I was sexually assaulted at my practice. So when you bring in this massage parlor thing, it affects me personally, because we went to court over it. I had a recording of him saying he did it. You know what they said? Not guilty. You know why? Well, we just think it's a massage parlor, and that's what it's known for. I just want to tell you that happened, and it's hard for me to share that in public because it's never been made public. But I'm sharing it today because when you label us under the same heading and the same thing that we already fight with, that actually happened to me, that my husband had to sit and watch? This happened in a court of law where this was not protecting me? I was not protected by the city. So he's talking about sex trafficking? I was assaulted, and it wasn't protecting me. That might not be yours, but you want to think about trafficking, this is in a far broader range than our businesses. We are, not only have I taught some of these people, trained some of these people, I've also educated them on ethics, what you do do, what you don't do, how you protect yourself. I protected myself, and I still got assaulted. And maybe you guys don't want to hear this story, but I think it's important you hear this story. Because when you're putting us in a label, when you're already not protecting us, then you want to take money from us so you can come in and what? I'm telling you what, if I had a client on my table, especially that suffers what I've suffered, and you just walk in, well, you got underwear on, you got a bra on, you know, did you expose someone? That was ridiculous. Then you put this on social media. I didn't find out about this till 6:15 tonight, so I would have had something else probably planned, but you get the raw version of Robin instead. Because when I look at this and it says massage parlor, this was all over Facebook. What do you think every member of this community now thinks about every one of us therapists in here now? That we're all massage parlors? And that irritates me. You know what? In my township, I live one house out of city limits. I had to get approval. They had a meeting for that. You know what one of the people said? Well, she does have a massage, it is a massage parlor. We know what that's known for. In a public meeting? No one stood up for me there either. I had to stand up for myself. So when I have to continue to stand up for terminology over sexual things in our licensed massage therapy, I'm going to be a little livid, and I hope all of you can understand that. I hope you can see my passion is for this. Why are you regulating us when no other businesses? How many trafficking have you heard? They're out of all kinds of other businesses. Video rooms, this, that, all this other stuff. But we're still holding us into an old-school label of calling us prostitutes? All of you. And the guy when he said about Asians, oh my gosh, are you serious? We are all people. We work on people. We love people. We take care of people. We know more about the physical body than most. We know more about people's emotions than most. And when you look at this, and you kind of come in and say, you know what, we're just going to walk in. Fire department can already come in and inspect my business. Already. We already have a whole law. I taught the ethics of the program. Everyone's licensed, and when you take that oath, and you say, I'm getting a license, and I apply, you're saying, I have no criminal record. You have any criminal record? You think you can get licensed? Really tough. So all of us are already held to this esteem from the state of Ohio that is nowhere near what can be done at the city level. I hope you understand that. It is above superseding. And I will say, if this passes, I will join everyone in here in a lawsuit. I will join every one of them because it is BS. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next we have Carol Riley. Carol Riley.
I'm Carol Riley. I live in Mount Vernon. I've lived here for 47 years. I have decided back in 1997, when my job at Sprint was done away with, that I did not want to relocate to Kansas City, Missouri. Everybody was asking what I was going to do. I didn't know. I got called into the office by my supervisor, have you ever considered becoming a masseuse? I says, hell no. I work on my coworkers. I have fun with it. I enjoy it. But did I consider doing it as a profession? He kept after me. So one day, I didn't have much to do, so I got on the phone, called out to North Central Tech, only to find out they had a three-year waitlist for their program. So I started doing some searching. I found a school in Westerville called Massage Away. I called down there. They were starting a class called Need a Friend. Was there every Monday night for six weeks. When you got through with the class, you'd know if you wanted to pursue this as a career. The rest is history. I did go on to school. I retired from Sprint. I went to massage therapy school, two years in program. Got licensed, been licensed for 23 years. I love what I was doing. I have worked locally. I have worked as a therapist for the Ohio State University out on North Campus. I was working at COTC when Matt was working there too, in the office when I was still in school and out of school. And it's been a journey. When I got licensed by the state medical board in 2000, it was an honor to have been able to pass the test because it was extremely stringent. The knowledge you had to have to pass and get licensed by the state was rough, contentious. I remember, there was a therapist here in town at the time, and he told me that I would go to wake up to Taurus, and I would go to sleep with Taurus. That was the anatomy and physiology book. And he wasn't kidding. After I got licensed and decided to open up an office here in Mount Vernon, I had to get a vendor's license through the recorder's office. And then it was after that that Governor Taft decided that massage therapy should be taxed. So then we had to start paying sales tax. And with what you have been done, and I remember when I was in school, and the conversation came up many times, 1800, 1850, 1898, the clone at those times was massage parlor. We have worked for 100 years to clean up this profession and get it credible, only to have something like this tear it back down and do what we have struggled to build ourselves up and make our profession legitimate across the world. And you want to tear it down again. That's unheard of, unrealistic, and very narrow-minded. The American Massage Therapy, I have the 75-year book. And it has a lot of articles on that. It's been an issue for many years, and I think you need to regroup and do this correctly, and have all county massage therapists, and we can all be found on the Ohio Medical Board, involved in this. If you don't, then I'm like the rest of us. I am just recently considering retirement at the age of 78. And I don't have to put up with this, and neither should any of these people out here. They've worked hard for where they've gotten and struggled, and you want to take it away. I'm sorry, I disagree.
Thank you. Next I have Ann Evans.
Ann Evans, 12606 Upper Gill Crest Road, Mount Vernon. I want to thank you all for listening to us rant and rave about our passion and our professions. And I can only hope that these things that have been presented in here are just a lack of research so far. It's insulting. I have been a licensed massage therapist since 2002. I also taught at the Career Center for several years when the massage therapy program was going strong. I will not take up a lot of time. I just want to say that I agree with every massage therapist that has spoken here tonight. And I want to thank you all for considering, and I hope that you have heard what we said and also felt it in your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people, all the names I had. Anybody not, not, did I miss somebody's request to speak? Okay? That concludes the person speaking of matters of city concern. We'll now move the legislative portion of the meeting. And counsel before you is the legislative agenda. We had one addition that was added today. So are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. And Mr. Hill asks that you read these by title and number only this evening. We have two resolutions for third reading. The first one is Resolution Number 2023-78. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-78, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for proposals for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to oversee design services for a new courthouse and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move that we adopt the Resolution Number 2023-78.
Seconded. They moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance.
I don't know if Brian Ball has got a few more comments to make sure we know where we are after our public meeting.
Yes, counsel, we, we had a public meeting. Several folks were there from the city. We had two full pages of, is this even turned on? It is, like I'm to lean over here a little bit. So we had a public meeting, and I think we had two full pages of folks sign in. We only received two written comments. We do have the comment period open until November. So part of where we are would be is passing this. We will put the, put the, put the package together to advertise for design services. We'd work through that process over the next couple of months. And then we would be, the next action by city council would be to, would be the budgeting process to start the design work in the next calendar year. Questions?
Any questions?
So how much weight do you put into those comments?
Quite a bit. Yeah, I think the other thing Mike and I talked about, and I think the mayor and I talked about, is sort of in parallel to this, we want to get those boards out and probably try to maybe tag onto a school board meeting or some other public events to get more comments. I think what a lot of the conversation about the look of the police department, the look of the chief, we are working on the function of the police department. We didn't, we, we asked the architect to put something on the building to start the conversation. So what you saw on the face of the police department is nothing that the administration picked out. That was something to start that conversation. So that, I mean, I'm not going to work in the building. He's not going to spend much time looking at the building. We want the public's input on the look and feel of that building. I think also the downtown with, with the courthouse, we spent quite a bit of time early on trying to mimic the look of the square. But we are still seriously open for, we are, we're going from the planning to the design phase. So we're very open to those comments, because a lot of our early effort has been the function of the building and making sure there's enough space to have the staff and the public interact with it correctly. We've been less focused on the look. So that's where we're, we are actively hoping for comments.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-79. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-79, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for proposals for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to oversee design services for a new police station and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-79.
Seconded. They moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance.
Mr. Ball, any other comments?
Nope. Kind of incorporated those together. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Now we move to resolutions for first reading. We have Resolution Number 2023-85. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-85, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for proposals for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to oversee operations of the city's Hiawatha Water Park for the 2024 through 2026 seasons and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to take Resolution 2023-85 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
This is for looking for our pool manager, and the reason for passing it is because of the season that we're in and needing to get that out.
Any other discussion on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-85.
Second.
They moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener.
I think that it's really straightforward.
All right.
Go ahead, Mike.
Last line in the caption says the 2024-26 seasons.
We're going to set this as a three-year contract to see what happens. It'll be broken down to 2024, 2025, and 2026, and then combined in all three to see what the prices look like.
So what language do we have to get out of it?
It depends on whether we, well, there will be performance metrics like in the current contract. contract as well as requirements that they have to meet.
They'll all be defined?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I assume we're using the same criteria for this search we did the last one?
Yes, which by the way, we did experience an increase of, what was the increase?
About $50,000, $20,000 on the.
About $50,000 this year over last year.
Over, above Mr. Scott's previous projections, and after speaking with the pool company, we believe that there are additional either savings or additional revenues that we can be raised in the upcoming years.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Now we have a resolution that was added today. That's Resolution Number 2023-86. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-86, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-86 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-86.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this res, this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Yes, Mr. Scott, I like these grants that you're going to talk about.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. We do have three supplemental appropriations. These are new resources coming into the city's treasury that was not anticipated at the beginning of the calendar year. On item number one is a grant from the Mental Health and Recovery for Licking and Knox Counties. This is directed to our merit drug court program. The Judge Thatcher has $3,298 for this particular program will be assigned to them. Item two, in a CDBG or Smolzmann's Grant Program for the Clinton Township Buckeye Edition, the state has provided the city with $750,000 towards this particular project, and as I understand, this project is coming away, on its way very quickly throughout this, still rest of this calendar year. Item three, for $200,000, again, the Ohio Public Works Commission, in the same project of the Clinton Township Buckeye Edition, they have provided this program for $200,000 construction of water service within the Clinton Township area, and so we appreciate what all of our engineering staff has done for us in beginning to garner these dollars for this project. Thank you, Mrs. Seville.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now we move to ordinances. The first ordinance is ordinance Number 2023-34. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance Number 2023-34, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the August 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinances to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith to publish the enactment of new matter and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023-34, please.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Counsel, here it is. Last one I have to review. Mr. Hill's been through it, I've looked through it, nobody else has looked through it that I know of. I ask for you to pass it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance for third reading is ordinance Number 2023-37. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance Number 2023-37, an ordinance providing for the salary scale for elected officials of the City of Mount Vernon, specifically the council president and members of council, mayor, auditor, and law director, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to amend ordinance 2023-37 as follows. I have given, or I think, Mr. Hill, you have a copy of this. It will reflect city council members and council president, a 1 and 3/4% increase for '24 and '25, the starting salary in 2024 for the mayor, 78, 664, and 3% increases each year, and a 3% increase for the auditor and law director over current salary with 3% for the next three years.
Second to the amendment.
Second.
Been moved. Been moved and seconded of this, this ordinance be amended. Any discussion on the amendment?
Does anybody else have any other comments? We discussed this a lot earlier.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
No.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, the amendment is approved. Now we come back to you as amended.
I move to adopt ordinance Number 2023-37 as amended.
Second. Been moved and seconded that this ordinance be adopted as amended. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Again, any other comments before we vote on this? We discussed this in the committee meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
No.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, this ordinance is adopted. Now we move to ordinances for second reading. First one is ordinance Number 2023-38. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance Number 2023-38, an ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for certain employees during the vacancy of the position of Safety Service Director and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2023-38 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt ordinance 2023-38.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion?
Mayor, any other comments other than thanking the folks who have been covering this work for us?
I really do want to thank Mr. Ball, Mrs. Blankenhorn, Mr., Ms. Neff, and Mr. Hinkle for picking up the ball and continuing our safety services in their respective departments. Also, Mr. Scott and Mr. Boren, thank you, you've been a godsend. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. The final ordinance for this evening is ordinance Number 2023-39. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance Number 2023-39, an ordinance creating chapter 785, massage parlors of Part VII, business regulation code of the codified ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I cannot in good conscience move forward with this piece. This was the recommended direction that I go, so I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke for an hour because that is what we need. I am not a massage therapist. My aunt is, and I care about what she does, and I care about the people of this community and our businesses. So I appreciate the options that were given to look at other avenues such as the Senate bill. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I've looked at the House bill, but I didn't know about the Senate bill. I can't thank you enough for coming and being direct because I appreciate the work that you guys do, and I hope that you can understand the goal that I had, but we can't do this work without your public input, and so I really appreciate it, and this will be postponed indefinitely, and we will look at coming at this issue from a different direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is that a motion to postpone?
Oh, motion to postpone, sorry.
Second.
Been moved to postpone this ordinance indefinitely and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Keener.
I think I said it all. I think they said it all, actually.
Any other comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. I know I mentioned it to you more than once, and I know you'll be working on the future. I appreciate that. I know you'll maybe contact some of these people.
I have some cards.
I would like, I heard the, the term laws sue the city many times, that when we do come back with another piece of legislation, if it's very my term, I'd like to hear from the law director how he feels that we can hold the new ordinance in court, so he wants to sue that we can win. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Been moved and seconded to postpone ordinance Number 2023-39 indefinitely. For the audience, that means it's off the table permanently. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Gladly, yes.
This ordinance is postponed indefinitely. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to comments from the administration. Mayor Mavis? Mayor Mavis. Been a long night. Been a long night. We talked about his salary. Mayor's sorry. It's been a long night, Mayor.
It could be worse, right? It could be worse. Anyway, thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Counsel, you received my email this morning and about the new Safety Service Director, Mr. Tanner Saliers, has been, is my selection. I want to thank the selection committee. He sat up there, I think, right next to Mr. Hillier for a little while on city council, so he knows, or was he sitting next to you? Yeah, that's right, he was sitting next to you, Janice. I'm sorry about that. Anyway, really excited to work with Tanner. We got about, I think, 12, 14 applicants, some local, but most out of town, sort of doing their, doing similar jobs as well, so I really want to thank, I appreciate, again, like I said before, the help from those who have been picking up the additional duties to continue that, but really looking forward to Tanner starting here next week. There will be a swearing-in ceremony for Zachary Thatcher, our newest officer, on Wednesday at 1:00. Those of you who like to show up for those, you're welcome to do, and I had asked the chief if he would introduce our newest team member, please.
The grant-funded position for our domestic violence liaison that, that we moved through legislation here recently, we interviewed a number of candidates, and I'd like everybody to welcome Tara Hensley. She is going to be our new domestic violence liaison for the Mount Vernon Police Department and the City of Mount Vernon. She comes to us from the private healthcare field, and we're just excited about having her. So, thank you.
I have more stuff, too. I'm sorry. Welcome. Anyway, I also wanted to thank everybody who came out to the public meeting last week at the Senior Center. That was great. We got a lot, we got a lot of comments, and so those of you from the city who were also able to make it, that was great. I was, well, hearing the sidewalks conversation and knowing what Karma Barbuda was going to be talking about, social determinants of health, sidewalks were our number four-ranked top priority from stakeholder involvement two years ago when we did our strategic planning. Transportation infrastructure was one of those top things, and it was mostly bike paths and it was sidewalks. Anyway, we can get people to walk, ride, roll, stroll, or scoot to get access to healthcare, and so we've had some leadership projects put forward to. Mr. Scott.
Leadership project on sidewalks.
Yes, entitled "Let's Take a Walk." So anyway, you will be seeing a lot of that more and more, and as well, the children, the fourth and fifth graders put forth that insight when we were meeting with stakeholders because they hate having their, their parents have to put them in a car and take them to the playground, to the park. They'd like to wa, they like to walk or ride their bike. Anyway, so there's that, I wanted to comment on that, and then Mr. Severance asked me to respond to an article that was published in the Mount Vernon News, and I wanted to do that, something that, let me just start with this. It is one big, fat, bold-faced lie. Let me be clear about that. I have reached out to the Mount Vernon News, well, Todd has, as asked on my behalf. I have not heard from the editor or the owner. I'm hoping to hear very soon. I am withholding judgment until I can actually talk with the Mount Vernon News. This article that was used, used some of the same language as another article that has been circulating out on the internet, and we know that it's, it's been plagiarized because of the typos that were identical in both articles. Until this afternoon, there was a missing word that was on it entitled "commentary." It was not, was it there this morning, Mr. Hill, when you looked?
No, it was not.
So it was added this afternoon, "commentary," in very, very small print under a very big picture of me saying that we're going to put the gas and the coal industry out of business in favor of solar and wind. Again, not true, not at all true. This was not identified as a letter to the editor or until recently an opinion, and it was never credited to anybody else, and so as far as I'm concerned, this is nothing more than a glorified anonymous letter. And like you, Mr. President, I put those in the trash can. You want our attention? You want to talk about it? Please put your name on it, and I would be happy to discuss it with you. The claims that Mount Vernon wants to eliminate natural gas absolutely are not true. We actually want to make gas at our wastewater treatment plant, clean it, compress it, and sell it or use it. If we only had a gas compressor company nearby who could help us with that. They might be able to just help us out with that. Anyway, so we're looking at that from our Sustainable 2050 program, and I don't, this is something that engineering and our utilities director and their team are going to be looking at so that we can reuse some of this wasted stuff that we have. Also, we're going to be building new buildings. While we may look at putting solar panels on the roofs, we're going to likely heat with natural gas. So we're not putting anybody out of business in that regard as well. Not to mention the, well, in the, okay, I've already talked about that other thing. I reached out to William Murdock, who's the executive director for the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, who also was a, he sent me back some information. I wanted to just share that with you. I said, "Mayor, I'm sorry to see this article. There are several items in that, in it that just aren't correct. We're not sure where this information originated. I will check with my team, but to my knowledge, the Mount Vernon News did not reach out for this piece." And this is now, we know that it was an opinion, a commentary. As you know, Sustainable 2050 is a voluntary program that supports MORPC's member communities' sustainability efforts to direct technical assistance, collaboration, peer learning, and recognition. Communities can engage in a number of different ways, from recycling and water quality to energy efficiency and trails, all of which are local decisions. In response to the article's incorrect information, the program certainly does not require the city to change laws, ban certain activities, or require farmers to replace fields with solar. If anything, Sustainable 2050 is a way for the city to share its own efforts with other communities and businesses around the region and get technical assistance on things it requests. Specific to natural gas, if it's helpful to know, MORPC is a member of the Ohio Gas Access Partnership, which is a coalition of communities and organizations seeking to improve natural gas availability in the region. Given its importance to central Ohio's economy, it is also, it's also been a priority of MORPC's Competitive Advantage Program as well. I've attached one of the examples, and this is an example that is a million-dollar investment in natural gas that will construct a natural gas line from the Rockies Express Pipeline in Pickaway County, north into a four-county area, which includes Pickaway, Union, Madison, and Franklin Counties, that will maintain competitive infrastructure by extending natural gas lines into underserved areas and serve existing and future commercial and industry employers. This will, this project that MORPC is promoting will create 10,000-plus jobs and retain 28,000 jobs. So, as you can see, MORPC is not for, against gas. That was, that was the big thing. So if you would like to see information on the program and MORPC's endorsement of this, I'd be very happy to share that with anyone. You can talk directly with the partner agencies in the project context. Anyway, as a former employee of the Mount Vernon News, I am hoping that there is a reasonable explanation for this misunderstanding, but very clearly, it's not, it does not meet professional journalism standards. And so hopefully, we will hear from them and get to the bottom of this. So, anyway, it is a big, fat, bold-faced lie. That's all I can tell you, Mr. Severns. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. It's Mayor, Mayor Starr. Mr. Scott.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Boren.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Seville.
Oh, you really surprised me. I'm usually last. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And really, this is what the government's all about because we work for you. And when you come and voice your opinion, and this is how it works. Except it broke my heart. Everybody was so passionate, and I was sorry that everybody was so upset. And Amber had the best attentions. And she really did try, but she just messed up there. And I just wanted to hug you when you told your story. I felt so bad. But really, we are all up here, and we want to do the best we can for Mount Vernon, and I don't want anybody to leave. I like all of you, and I want to keep you all here forever. So I don't want anybody to move away. So we want to make you happy. And I'm sorry that we didn't know that that insulted you that much. I didn't know all the problems that went with that because I'm not adverse in all of that, and I didn't know that it would insult you that much. But I didn't write it either. But, and I'm glad we got Mayor Starr back. Glad to have you back.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville.
And welcome, Tanner. We look forward to having you here.
Be here the next one.
We look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about the crosswalk situation. Mrs. Jaeger called me a couple nights ago. I was not aware of the accident out there. I stressed to her, you know, making sidewalks or crosswalks happen is probably not going to happen by next Thursday, but there's got to be some sort of solution. Chief, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. And I know the school has a responsibility here, too, but is there not some way to work out something for safe crossing for kids out there till we can clean up out there?
We actually have, there's actually a plan in progress that predated this unfortunate incident with the latest child being struck out there. Quentin Platt from the engineer's office. Brian, when did he start this?
About a year ago.
About a year ago. So there's a several-stage plan that's already in place. We actually had a meeting today about it, and we feel that there's several things in stage one, correct me if I'm wrong here, that we can do without a lot of requesting permission from the state since a lot of these are on state routes and a lot of permitting and things like that. There's a stage one where we could add six crosswalks. Also, we're going to look at petitioning the state of Ohio ODOT to expand and readjust the sizes of the 20 mile an hour speed limit zones to better serve the areas. And we can do that fairly quickly.
Okay.
We did have a meeting about this today. And then in phase three is when we get into sidewalk construction and some other initiatives that ODOT would have to approve.
So can pre-phase one be some sort of working together with the school? Whether they have a resource officer, we have, some way to get those kids across the street safely in the morning? I know she said parents are struggling.
We can definitely look at that.
Thank you.
Part of the problem is they come from several different directions.
Yeah.
Kids come from several different, we can't put a crosswalk at every street intersection on Martinsburg Road. We can't hit Parrot Street, Delano, Spruce Street, Riley Street, Pine. We can't, we can't put one there for every single one of those. A lot of this, and I don't mean to turn this back on the parents, is educating your kids of where to, where to cross safely currently. Mr. Cedar, the superintendent of schools, was there at our meeting today, and he is open to, to anything that we could do that. Whether it's crossing guards possibly, possibly having an officer out there during certain areas and times during the day.
That'd work.
Say again.
That'd be great.
Crossing guards or officers or both?
Officers.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Justin's really hitting.
Yeah, my traffic officer, patrolman, he's, he's doing a lot of enforcement in that area. And he's working on slowing down speeders in not just that school zone, but all the schools.
Is he watching specifically at the Career Center exit? Because I pick up my son there, and during let-out time period at 2:30, they go fishtailing across the bridge, and it gets a little wild and scary. Is that the time period, like he's there?
Yes.
Okay.
We scheduled his time to coincide with before school starts to after school's out. So we kind of adjusted his schedule from eight to four to a seven to five schedule on a 10-hour shift.
Thank you.
That being said, he's one person. So can he be at every school intersection every day, every time?
Do you have enough police officers to have him there?
We have four people on duty, yes, ma'am. And he doesn't count for the on-duty strength. So we would have, when, on days he works, we have him, and then we would have four other officers. So we could detail other officers to, to assist with the crossing position.
About eight years ago, they were trying to get the light there, and they were fighting it, and they were not getting anywhere.
Lights on state routes have to be approved by the state.
They were saying that, no way.
I think one of our councilmen got a, kind of a shock today when they found out, I did, that just a regular flashing light costs upwards of $14,000 or $15,000 just for a light that blanks and says "school zone."
I was going to say, it was about eight years ago, and they, they all said, "No, it doesn't fit in there." So I was going to say, I don't think you're going to get a light.
Well, I'll go back to how I, I'll go back to how I started. School has some dog in this fight, too. I'm not putting it all on your guys by any means. I just, I know any sort of assistance to those parents out there, you know. Couple of them called me after I talked to her, and they're just, they're struggling. So I appreciate it. Thank you. On a lighter note, this is the time of year my husband asks every year, "When are they going to start picking up leaves?" So I appreciate your email. It was very timely.
October 30.
(laughter)
Thank you.
Thanks. That's all.
That's it. Thank you. Mr. Mahan.
Had the opportunity, as we just discussed, to meet with the chief and the engineers department today and I to talk about these crosswalks and the safety. And I do appreciate the folks that came out from the first ward tonight. And I was really glad, actually had started asking you about this a few months ago. Glad to hear that a plan was in place. And I think you'll be pleased, I don't want to put Mr. Ball in the box, but I think you'll be pleased with how quickly we can do some of these things. I, again, don't want to micromanage him, but I think going to see some things pretty quick. So that's great news. Welcome to our new domestic violence liaison. Looking forward to, I'm going to be at the swearing-in, so if, I don't know if you're going to be there, but I'll see you there. Looking forward to that. Also, we have a Mount Vernon Fire Department open house, I believe, this week. Said, "You left me one thing, chief."
I left it for you.
Thank you, Mayor Mavis. I appreciate it. (laughter) And.
Give me a break.
But appreciate the work. And I just want to say, you know, I'm obviously new this year to council, but just pleased with the expertise and hard work I see in the city, engineering department, police department, fire department. Just a lot of good people doing a lot of good work. And I was reminded of that again today, and I'm appreciative. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener.
I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight again. And don't forget that Halloween is actually on the 31st because I still have people asking me when it is. It runs 5:30 to 7:00?
One of the first questions we get, January 2nd.
Yeah.
When is trick-or-treat?
But what times? It's 5:30 to?
5:30 to 7:00.
Okay. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things real quick, three of them actually. Mr. Mary, might want to write this down. On September 17th, I received an email from assignments@mountvernonnews.com, and they asked me, "We saw this on September 11th meeting agenda. It was the 2023-71 commitment to the program of your MORPC. Two questions. Why are you sponsoring this resolution? How would it improve Mount Vernon? Thanks." And I, my response to it was, because the way they asked it, the piece of legislation was given to me by the mayor because I chair planning and zoning. I am still looking into whether this is the best option for Mount Vernon. I have asked for a 10-minute committee meeting to discuss further. I would assume that might be where that article came from.
They forwarded, they, someone forwarded that to me also, but there's no identifier. It looked awful fishy.
That's why I checked.
I checked with our IT department, and they, they said, "Nah, just leave it alone."
So that's, that's what I got. I assume it comes from the same place. But anyways, I didn't instigate it. I just wanted council to see what I read, and that's why I shared it.
Yeah.
So just so you know my side of the story. Mr. Salyers starts on Monday, the 16th, correct? It's public knowledge, so I'm going to ask it because it was asked of me. So the wage we're starting him at, was that Mr. Zick's wage? Because I saw you advertise it at up to $85,000.
It is where Mr. Zick is leaving.
The wage he last had. Thank you very much for answering that question. And my last question. Mr. Boren, I sent you an email on August 31st asking about R1 zoning rental homes for Burner View Drive, giving examples of what Marysville had discussed. I have not heard anything. Do you have, I'm not asking for an answer now, but could you please answer that in an email?
Yeah, we've been working on it. Yeah, well, I'll have you a response and email this week, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, thanks to all for coming out to speak tonight. It does matter. We hear you. I'd like to thank you for your work in Mount Vernon, those that are trained and licensed massage therapists. It does matter. It's good. So it was interesting to hear, I don't remember your name, but that you actually, that some of the other massage therapists were the ones that reported what was happening here a few years ago. So to me, it sounds like there's just some good self-regulating going on within those, and that's, that's probably enough. So it's a good thing that I believe council did the right thing to postpone this indefinitely. So, but thank you. And I just want to also thank those that came out to talk about the crosswalks. We are going to try to get that improved real soon. So, thank you.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes, I'd like to thank all of the members of the community that came out to speak this evening. I know a bunch of them moved on, but just that we appreciate you coming out and actually speaking on behalf of your profession and being a part of, as an auctioneer, being a part of a state-regulated and licensed industry. I can most definitely appreciate not only watching out but guarding anything that may affect your livelihood. So I thank you guys for that and for taking the time to do that this evening. Also, want to thank everyone involved in selecting the Safety Services Director.